Okay, I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for February 4th, 2020. First item on the agenda is continued discussion with Sarah Adams from CMRPC regarding zoning bylaws for solar energy systems and hazardous waste facilities. Thank you for coming again. You just can't seem to shake us. So anyway, where is a good place to get started? We have hazardous and solar. I don't know if you have a preference?
Um, I do not have a preference. Let's, let's start with hazardous, I guess.
Okay. So everyone should have, is this anything been updated since the last, oh yes, it does look updated since the last time.
Yeah, so the updates were addressed in, did everyone get those email Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, so the updates were addressed in the email that I sent last week, which I think everyone also has in their packets. So this now includes that 1,500 but buffer for any residential. The definition of hazardous waste facility has been updated. I deleted the hours of operation section based on a discussion that you all had at the meeting that I did not attend. And then there's some further discussion of the decommissioning, baseline testing, and peer review items that were proposed. So I guess I will ask, are there any comments on this updated draft or on any of the information that I provided? Also, the entire state hazardous waste regulations were linked in that email for anyone's reference if they wanted to look through those.
Okay.
I, I think just to add on to Sarah's comments, when she and I, you know, compared notes and then compared, you know, when I shared the planning board comments from your last meeting. So what we've determined and you sort of left it like this, that depending on what, you know, Sarah had found from DEP, is that we wouldn't add, based on how DEP handles the decommissioning, is that we would leave it up to DEP. And then it wouldn't be the town, oops, sorry, I didn't shut that off.
That's okay.
That we wouldn't, that it wouldn't be the, you know, the town in addition to DEP doing the, all the studies that DEP already does. So that would have us not put in the number seven and the number eight that Amy had provided to the board at the last meeting.
Okay, and Bob, you looked pretty extensively at the solar bylaw. Did you have anything on the hazardous? Did you get to see this? No concerns or anything? Okay, any comments or questions from the board? I guess I'll start.
Yep, I have one. I think the last time we talked with Sarah, or maybe as a group, we talked about the groundwater. And we had taken them off, the recommendations from Sarah, because we said it was in our groundwater bylaw. But I looked it over and I didn't feel it was similar. Like, what Sarah had proposed is, I don't know if anybody still has it, but she added area two and area, area three. Disposal of hazardous waste as defined in this bylaw was prohibited. And we had discussed it was in it, but when I went back and read the zoning bylaw under groundwater, I'm on page seven dash sixty, if anyone has the ground, has the bylaws. But when I read it, it, in our bylaws, it talks about any activity that's outside, where I think if you're prohibiting hazardous waste on groundwater, that it should be inside or outside. Our number five says, "Any activity which involves a principal or accessory use, the manufacture, storage, application, transportation, and/or disposal of toxic or hazardous materials, where such activity would involve outside storage, onsite waste disposal, or uncontrolled drainage facilities, which would allow discharge to surface of groundwaters." And just when I read that, I thought it wasn't the same as when Sarah wrote number two, "Disposal of hazardous waste is prohibited in areas two and three."
I think Carrie, you could probably have Fred.
Yes.
Into that.
Yes.
As he did at the last meeting.
I forgot what the site was, but I don't think it was one that Amy was referring to. I thought it was in the prohibited use. It says land use resulting in disposal of any waste material, solid or liquid or other domestic sanitary waste is prohibited in groundwater, wine, and it's prohibited in the other as well.
I see it as prohibited in this one. And Sarah added the word in that number one. She added the word hazardous waste material, solid, liquid, or other. So she was just adding the word.
And then in areas two and three, it says disposal of solid waste other than brush and stumps.
Right.
Anything except for stumps and brush is prohibited in two and three. And then the rest is, here we find those.
I don't know, I feel like.
I believe that's covered under the prohibited section.
I think maybe fix it to say disposal of hazardous waste other than solid. Because it doesn't, to me, it isn't straight, because when you read number five, it says it, it, right after that, it's in the same section, that it's, you know, as long as it's not outs.
You know, if you go back to, to seven dash fifty-nine, where it's following, this is a prohibited.
Yep.
And area one, it says, "Resultating in land use resulting in the disposal of any waste." So that pretty much covers in the area one. Then in areas two and three, it says disposal of solid waste other than, and then the next one is, "On-site disposal of liquid or leachable waste other than sanitary domestic waste or an octopus process waste." So pretty much everything is prohibited.
Then what does number five mean? That's one, two, three, and then the next page has four and five. Five talks about hazardous waste.
It allows for the exception of agricultural, religious, or others.
Yep.
There aren't any agricultural or religious hazardous waste sites, is my guess.
Okay. I don't know, I guess I would feel more comfortable using her words on area one, where she added hazardous, just the word hazardous. And maybe in areas two and three, also include the word hazardous waste. She wrote disposal of hazardous waste as defined by this bylaw. I just feel it calls it out and it makes it clear. And she had recommended it.
I, I thought what we talked about the last meeting was just keeping up the definition in the definition section and not touching the groundwater section. Just keep up the word, the definition of hazardous waste, and so that would apply throughout.
I guess, I, I know, I remember that, but I guess when I went back and read the groundwater, I felt we needed to make it more stringent.
So I, I feel that maybe, I, I agree, that I think adding hazardous in an instance where it says any waste might make it a little bit less restrictive, you know, because then anything that doesn't meet that definition of hazardous waste, are we now saying you can do it in groundwater? So I agree with leaving it as is.
Oh, okay.
Also, since we're not implementing a full new hazardous materials bylaw here, we're just updating sections to your existing zoning as necessary. I think we don't want to be updating sections that we don't need to.
Okay, I just want to double check, just to make sure. Because that was the only thing that stood out to me that I wanted to clarify on hazardous waste.
And also with the, any, anything that's in the groundwater bylaw, I mean, I mean, anything that's in a groundwater district, the staff receives the, I always reverse this, MSDS. The MSDS sheets, which are the manufactured data.
Safety data sheet.
Okay. And the, so for, for anything that, that comes, that is being proposed for a ground, in a groundwater area, they have to supply us with that information. So whether it's being stored inside or outside.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments over here? No comments. Anything down here?
Not for me.
I just had, and I'm sorry if you cover this in your email, I can't recall it right now. We looked at, on the, the version we looked at the last time, I think, there was a seven and an eight. And we were going to see what we, so decommissioning is covered by DEP. Was the peer review covered by our bylaws? And is number eight covered by the state?
Yeah, so.
Yes, was that addressed? Okay.
Yep, so there's, well, you can all take a look through that list and let me know if, what the state requires is pretty extensive, and they have engineers who their entire job is reviewing these applications. So it just seems a little duplicative to ask for these things and then hire someone to do peer review when DEP already has people doing that.
That's okay, I just want to double check. I just had in my notes, so I just want to make sure.
And then as far as just straight peer review, Carrie, just in general, it's found in the, separate from the zoning bylaw, there's a companion piece that's called the Planning Board Rules and Regulations.
Oh, right, yes.
Not the subdivision rules and regulations, but it's just called, it's called Rules and Regulations. And in that is the whole list of what has to be submitted as part of a site plan review. And then there is peer review in that section. So that peer review covers you for, for any, any peer review you feel is necessary when you're doing site plan.
Okay. Okay. So then, other than that, and our table of uses looks good to everybody, that's what we intended. It's no everywhere but a permit and industrial.
Yep, okay. I just have one more question on the definition. And that, we might have talked about this before too, I don't know why it seemed so far away. But when you go to the definition of hazardous waste facility on the first page, it talks about newer substantially improved structure. But when you go to like the mass general laws for hazardous waste facility, it talks about any site which will be used. I'm just wondering if it says any new or substantially improved structure? If that would leave out, say, somebody moves into Northborough and they use a building that's already there, so it's not new, and it's not improved, say they go into a warehouse that we already have, will that be a loophole? Because when I read it on the, on the mass page, it said any site. But we have any newer substantially improved structure, and I was just wondering why.
Um, we can make it any site, I just want, we can wordsmith it a little bit. I do just want to leave that substantially improved structure. That way you have some authority to review things that have changed. So I will revise this, so it reads something along the lines of any site or.
Well, we, we don't know if the, if the whole board agrees with that or not.
Okay.
So it's just.
Any thoughts on that?
Have that discussion.
I just didn't want a loophole where someone came in and said, "Well, it's not new."
Is that typical, the typical language, or what would typical lang, did you just pick language that was typical, or?
This is pretty typical language, but that doesn't mean that it's good language necessarily, so.
Any comments down here? Are you for changing it to any site, or do you like any new?
I agree that it potentially poses a loophole. I'm not sure how many sort of facilities you're going to have that won't involve some sort of building. So I think it would be a rare loophole, but you don't want to open yourself up for anything like that.
Okay, is the board okay with changing that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that sounds like it's, it would be a good, quick change.
So you're going to say any new site, or?
Any site.
Well, you can say any newer substantially improved structure, comma, site, comma, you know, I don't know.
I think it should just be any site or.
Okay. That's, that is what the state says, any site. But the, or substantially improved structure probably helps too. Yeah.
Okay, there's three terms. Okay, great. Oh, sure.
The proposed bylaw, the first paragraph, hazardous materials definition, third line down. And the determination of the enforcing authority. Who is the enforcing authority?
Yeah. We had discussed this and decided to leave it as is, I think, so it was a little vague. There was some back and forth about whether that should be the Board of Health or whether it should be the planning board. I'm not sure if you have an opinion one way or another. Enforcement authority, yeah. So is the opinion that it might make more sense to change that to the Board of Health?
Well, I think for, when we talked about before, that was about solar, because we talked about when people have emergency situations, you need to be able to get out there, they can't wait for our meetings, and it didn't make sense for us to do it anyway. What did we change for the language there? Did we just leave it enforcing authority on the solar?
I, I didn't have in my notes about changing the enforcing authority. But, you know, now that Bob reminds us, it's true, the planning board doesn't have any, you know, by state statute, doesn't have any enforcing authority. So it's either the building inspector or the Board of Health. And I think throughout the bylaw, it's the building inspector.
Yeah.
So to be consistent with the rest of the zoning bylaw, it probably should be the building inspector here.
Or if they want to put it on the hands of somebody else, it should be specified. Because I'm looking for it, but I think if someone has a blanket statement, then I'm the enforcement authority for all this stuff. And I just think it would be important to, you know, narrow down enforcing authority. That's, that's up to you, but I would suggest if it's anything other than the zoning enforcement officer, to actually nominate the authority who has that power.
Okay, any thoughts on who this?
No, when I read it with the state, they just, I think when we questioned it, it's because it, it didn't even have that. And I think that was one of the things we decided, do we leave it in, or do we just cross it out? That one little sentence.
In our definition table, do we define enforcing officer as a zoning enforcement officer? So I would say if we define it.
As generally defined by the state.
Yeah.
In the forty-eight.
Yeah.
The building inspector shall be the zoning enforcement officer. So unless, if you leave it as this, the enforcing authority would automatically, would, in my opinion, would default back to me.
Okay.
You know, if you want to nominate another enforcing authority, like the fire department or the Board of Health or something like that, that should probably be spelled out.
Okay, so if we leave it enforcing authority, we can't leave it up to the situation? Like, in some cases, maybe it is the fire department, in some cases, the Board of Health?
No, but, but, I mean, obviously, God forbid, something happens, but if something were to happen and I got called, first thing I'm going to do is call the fire department.
So y'all work together.
I'm going to call everybody in, you know, to, to get their take on it. You know, making big decisions like that is never made in a vacuum. You know, it's a consensus of the, you know, health, fire, and zoning.
Any thoughts down here on who that would be?
I just think, I guess I'd want feedback from the staff on what you think would be the best way to handle this, since.
I think it should be the building or zoning enforcement officer. And I, and I think at this point in this process, to add someone else here that has not been part of this process, and, you know, the language was due yesterday to the town administrator, and he knows that you finalized language tonight. So, you know, I, I think if you, you know, if we bring in another entity, you know, you can certainly do that, but it's, you're going to be doing it during the public hearing process. I, I just, again, I think to be consistent, it's the, it's the zoning enforcement officer. This is a zoning bylaw, it's the zoning enforcement officer.
And I think as, as even Bob or Kathy said, it's going to be, depending on the situation, you just need a point person, and then if it's the fire department or if it's the Board of Health that needs to get involved, then they can get involved at that point.
Okay, so you're suggesting we specify zoning enforcement officer rather than enforcement authority? Okay, everyone good with that?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. So determination of the zoning enforcement officer.
All right, anything else on hazardous materials?
That's a wrap. Okay, so.
So this draft incorporates some of the changes that were communicated in your last meeting, including most of Bob's edits.
It's not yours, because I'm looking.
Incorporated or included in the proposal.
Yeah.
I'm going to pop one more on.
Sure.
A lot of the commercial scale ground mount solar systems, what they do is they have a large battery or energy storage system, so that this, the facility can continue pumping electricity into the grid when the panels aren't operating, like at night. NFPA, the National Fire Prevention Association, has a regulation about how to deal with these battery consoles and how to deal with them in the case of a fire overload or overheating, or something like that. It's an NFPA regulation, just like they regulate fire extinguishers, sprinklers, all that other business. It's, it has not been officially codified as a enforceable code through the building and fire regulations here in Massachusetts. However, after speaking with the, the people where I, where I learned this information from, is that you can make mention of this eight fifty-five, and it, you can put that in the conditions with the decision. It's part of the site plan approval. Okay. Basically, what it is, is these batteries with lithium ion. When they burn and you put water on it, it's a contaminant to the soil. The basic thing is to let it burn. Okay, it's not hurting anybody, protect your exposures, neighborhoods, whatever, but let it go. Because it'll do more harm to the groundwater than it will dissipates out in the sky. That's one of the many things that it talks about. But it talks about signage, storage, setbacks of the structures, how far distance away, how far away, some of these things are placed inside of a building. Okay, so if you had a large rooftop solar system, you want to put these batteries inside of a building? You can, but there are restrictions. So I would recommend that NFPA eight fifty-five be mentioned as a, one of the conditions for site plan approval.
So would we want to add that as a K under site plan approval? That would go right after all requirements of the National Fire Protection Code shall apply, we can add.
Yes.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
So which page are you on?
Um, I'm on.
Six.
I could never.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
Number six. You know what we're talking about, pilot? Just before number three.
So you're adding it as H?
Uh.
I mean, K, yeah, that's what I meant.
So right before site control. That's NFPA eight five five. Why do we keep making more work for myself?
All right, what else? Anything else?
Anything down here?
No.
Anything down here?
I just had a quick question.
Yeah.
And it might not be even answered by here, but I was just wondering, in the case of duplexes on residential, does each side get, if they wanted, a ground mount? Or is it one per lot, or that's not even included in here, so it doesn't, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it?
That is a good question, because that would be two accessory uses on one lot.
Well, if you were to have.
But there's two units.
Right, if you were to have a duplex, and each side of the duplex wanted to have a garden shed, we would typically allow it.
Yep.
So.
I would agree, because each side of the duplex would have its own meter.
Right.
So they would want to put it back into the grid with their own meter.
Right.
So, yes, they would be too.
Yeah, I think.
All right, I was just curious.
Good question.
Okay. Any other questions over here? No. All right, so from my notes, I just had the, and it looks like it's in here now. This is the section I'm looking at now, the site plan approval. Bob had said there was no language from seven, three dash zero five zero A one I? That was one of his comments. Is that now reflected in here? Kathy, you were going to look at, that's all set?
I, oh, I had from my, from my notes from the last meeting, I had three comments from Bob that, that the, that, that came after his comments in the email. And I think that Sarah addressed all of Bob's comments.
So, yeah, I think if, if people look at the email, I think the only comments that weren't addressed, I had noted a couple in there, and Bob, I'm not sure if you feel strongly about any of these, but I didn't address the site plan approval applying to small scale, since we aren't requiring site plan approval for small scale ground mounted systems. Previously developed sites, I left that wording as is. I think the intent of stating that and the purpose is just to encourage folks to use rooftops and parking lots rather than stair cutting.
Right.
Materially, I, that was one that I discussed with Kathy. We left that as it was for any substantial changes to projects, so that would apply. And then for the fencing, I did update so that rather than stating a maximum of six feet for fencing, we had previously done, it's now a minimum of six feet. But I did not include any other specific requirements for fencing, so.
Okay, so.
So.
Go ahead, it's, sorry.
So I think in the fencing, there's several different types of fencing, and I know we talked about this. But what if you just put like a post and a rail? I mean, you can, there's, do you know what I mean? There's just, do you know what I'm saying?
Well, the wording is site impervious. So there's no, there's no specifications other than that, but that's either, that's wood or that's chain link with privacy slats of some sort. So it's site impervious, that's the only sort of requirement that we have. Does, is everyone comfortable with that, or do you think it needs to be?
Do you feel comfortable with that?
The only thing I, my memory's any good. Having a top rail and bottom rail adds to the security of the fence. If you have a distance between your vertical posts and you get no bottom rail, depending upon how badly somebody wants to get in there, they could always start wiggling and wiggle through or under. And, you know, the top rail adds a little bit rigidity to the top of the fence, too. It's just an added security measure. Because if you just, if you say just a fence, most installers are going to want to try to cheap out and just put the posts in and run the fabric and call it a day. You know, just my opinion, I think, you know, in installation of that size, without kind of the type of danger warrants a little more security.
I don't, one of the things I meant, I'm going to do it right now, that I meant to check was to see elsewhere in our bylaw if we were that specific about fences. That's right, it is the only time.
We, in, in our site design standards, we have a, a section, we say landscaping, fencing, or other screening, you know, shall be maintained in a manner that achieves the purpose of this section. You know, we don't, we don't talk specifically about what kind of fence. When we talk about, in that same section, this is all on page eighty-four, we talk about fencing for exposed storage areas, that's where the dumpsters comes in, Bob. Garbage dumpster, dumpsters, service areas, truck loading shall be screened for review of a buddy's properties and streets using planting fences and other methods. So again, you know, your zoning, I mean, whatever we're doing, it should just be all about consistency. So if you're going to require one kind of fence, you know, or, or specifications in one area of the zoning, then we should go through and change it everywhere that fences are, if that's what you want.
So the only.
Everywhere that fences are mentioned.
Yeah, so the only reason I'm bringing it up is because when you're talking about a dumpster, even if someone climbs over and falls into a dumpster, they're not going to hurt themselves with garbage. They're just going to smell, but not hurt themselves. But if you're going to go over and climb on top of these panels, it's a safety issue, right? So that's why I was just talking about that, whether, I don't think we, it's the first time we've had it in our bylaw. Mostly the other times is just to prohibit someone from climbing over and getting into a dumpster, which I'm not quite sure how much they're going to harm themselves as much as solo panels. And the other thing is probably more for a.
And the other thing is probably more for aesthetic purposes, if you're looking into a yard and contractor's yard, you don't wanna see the trucks. This is just looking in more residential places where somebody could get access to it.
So for this, you wanna specify the type of fence?
I'm just asking Bob's opinion, being the, you know, the building inspector, do you think it's sufficient the way we've written it? Or do you think we should add some more to it?
I'm just looking at, if, if you want the extra security of the bottom and top rails, I don't think that would be too difficult to add. I just know that if you've got, you know, ten or twelve feet between uprights, and they put in a chain link fence, it's, you can see it wobbly over time.
Is there special consideration for pools, where there would be the same concern?
Go ahead.
Okay, so would you, is it specified that you have to have a top and bottom rail?
It's, it's on the zone.
It has to be, it's just part of the building code.
Okay.
And, and the fencing of the rails, and it's, it's actually, when a fence goes around a pool, it now becomes a barrier, you know, not a fence. So it's a different language, a different specification, but yeah, it has to be rigid at the top and bottom as well.
Okay, so based on his answer, how does that impact that you?
So what I'm saying is, would you, like Kathy said, rather getting into too much detail, would you just reference the building code as similar as you would do for swimming pools? Or you can't do that, you have to be more specific?
I would probably make it specific to your ground mouth holes.
Okay. So that's just my recommendation to the board if they wanna. And, and again, just as an example, for consistency's sake, in the sole, in the wireless bylaw. Yeah. You, you just say fencing, the fencing shall be compatible. And it shall not be barbed or razor. The cell tower ones? Mm-hmm.
So are you happy with how it is now, or you want, you want to change?
If we could hear from the other board members, do they wanna add it or not add it?
I think it's something that should be considered, yeah.
Yep, I agree.
Seems like a small change to add. So do you want it throughout the zoning bylaw, too?
If it's just for cell towers, how, what other things does it, would it fall under for the zoning bylaw?
Well, there's, there's fencing throughout, I mean, in all, in all of your site design standards, it references fencing. And then in the, um, in the, um, cell tower bylaw, it just references fencing. So I'm just posing that to you, whether, whether you want it, the bylaw to be consistent or not.
Without seeing the other instances, I don't know.
Right, maybe it's just easier to do it right as this bylaw, for now. I don't know how many times it's throughout the other bylaw.
So how about, since this is new for us, the residential, the, the mounted, the exterior mounted, not on the roof, it's new for our bylaw, what if we just include it now? If it becomes an issue because it's confusing, because fencing is one way for one and another, then we can amend it in another year? I just don't think it's gonna be an issue. I'd rather, um, err on the side of safety, since you're going into residential neighborhoods.
Are you comfortable?
And they're becoming more and more popular? It's, it's up to them. I mean, I understand what you're saying, it's not consistent, yeah. That's fine.
Well, is it a lot, does it take a lot to change it throughout?
Oh.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like, so that's why it's easier just to leave it.
Just add it with this.
Yeah.
And then reconsider. Does that sound?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're gonna change three. Alright, execute. Add it, that's the screening and landscaping.
Um, and also will we reference fencing for, um.
For residential. On page four.
Any other questions or thoughts down here? No. Anything else down here?
No.
Okay, so I think what I was referring to with the site plan stuff, within our current site plan, for what kicks off a site plan, it sounded like Bob was saying there's nothing in our current bylaw that would kick off this site plan process for solar. Is, was that what you had caught before in your edit? He said there's no language for, for that specific section, where we define the site plan approvals required for the following uses. So will this, would our current bylaw support a site plan review kick, you know, being kicked off?
Yeah, I, I believe it does.
It does, okay, that's fine, I just wanna make sure, because.
Well, it did, it, I mean, how it, well, go ahead, Sarah.
And there's also language in here in, um, section seven oh three, um, oh five, oversight plans, to add, um, construction of a large scale ground mounted solar, portable tiered insulation.
Okay, so then we did add that.
In our, in our bylaw, our site plan bylaw, you know, today, um, has a section as far as, you know, the thresholds for site plan. And all new construction of any municipal institutional, commercial, industrial, or multifamily structure or purpose.
So it fits that.
That grabs everything.
Got it.
Except a single family house.
Perfect. Okay. The other thing was, and I apologize if it was in this email, I can't recall it for the life of me. So, we were gonna speak to the assessor about the pilot program, if the payment in lieu of taxes made sense? Did that sound?
We, we didn't, uh, if I was supposed to do that, I'm sorry, I didn't have that in my notes. But, but again, the, the pilot, I believe the way that Sarah explained that is that has to go to town meeting.
Right.
So there's a whole bunch of steps that have to happen if we were to even, um, you know, consider that.
The requirement is if applicants are interested in negotiating a pilot, they have to submit that draft agreement to you at the time that they submit their application. So, this is not actually a requirement to enter into a pilot, it's not a guarantee that they are going to get a pilot, it's just saying if you want this sort of agreement, you have to give us your draft.
Okay. And the final thing, and you may have gone down this laundry list before, so we have taken, removed signs out of design standards, and we're not including them. Okay.
Right, we're gonna, um, we talked about using the language that's in the, you know, bylaw today. Cause I think the concern was about residential, right? If people were gonna put up the sign in residential.
That was for home occupation, right? Not solar?
No, this was, there was a section for signage.
Yeah, I haven't used existing, um, used the existing zoning bylaw.
Oh, okay, for this, too.
Oh, I know, that was, because Bob, you were talking about, should there be, like, you know, high voltage and things like that?
Yeah, there's.
And we figured the building code and the fire department, they're gonna require that.
Utility, the manufacturers of some of these components, you know, they all have their different requirements for signage and safety. And, you know, it's, that's something I don't know, and I don't think you expect a zoning enforcement officer to know all those other nuances. So, you kinda leave it based upon requirements of the utility and the manufacturers and the fire department and OSHA and all the other myriad of groups.
Okay. Alright, so it sounds like as of now, our only additional changes are adding the NFPA eight fifty-five condition under site plan approval.
And I'd like to continue with that, I was just reading through it. If you go to site plan approval, number two.
In the bylaw or in the zolder, in this holder?
In the zolder. You get, uh, smaller A.
So it's on page six? If everyone's using the copy I gave you tonight, it's on page six.
Under, um, line A, site plan detailing, array arrangement, control panels or enclosures, inverters. Somewhere in there, you should probably add a, um, energy storage systems, which are these batteries we were talking about earlier. Also, on B, on the one line diagram showing the array panel interconnections, inverter arrangement, step up transfer, all that other stuff.
Okay.
I think that should do it.
Any comments on that, is that okay for the board?
Yeah.
So in A and B, Bob?
Yeah.
So what was B?
B is the, um.
The one line diagram.
The one line diagram?
Okay.
And that's energy storage systems.
That's what they call a battery?
Yes. And it's bleeding out through over a thousand pounds. That's what, that's what the trip, um, so.
So no one's walking away with that?
No. You can't even plug your toaster.
Okay, so, then adding that change, did we, did we have any other changes? I think that was it. Alright, so that's great.
So I will get these back to you tomorrow. I know you have to submit them.
Yep, perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a lot of work.
We got you out early tonight.
Yeah, not bad at all.
You can, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I love your question portion.
I'll allow a comment if it's specific to one of these.
Yes, we were just talking about, so Michael Creamer, uh, One Buck Hill Road, just moved town weeks ago, and so it's popped up on the planning board agenda, uh, with respect to hazardous waste. It sounds like this is a couple meetings.
Yep, yep.
Sorry for the first time, but with respect to the Tridebby location, that's right, you know, right near our property, so I just kinda, is there a quick kind of synopsis you could give me on how, what you're proposing, voting on, affects a location like that?
Sure, so, um, what we're doing is hazardous waste is an exempt use by the state. So, would you call it an exempt use? It's called an exempt.
Yeah.
So, um, we can't keep it, we need to put in bylaws that allow, allow us to create conditions around it. So what we don't want is for something to come into town, and we don't have anything in our bylaws that allows us the ability for a special permitting type process. So what we've done here is we've worked with, um, our regional planning commission, and Sarah's been a representative for that. And she's helped us to figure out what's the best way to protect our town and our neighborhoods. So if we did have an application come through from the state, that we would be protected, um, you know, in whatever zone it would be located. Now, I think, um, that's commercial by you, right?
Yep.
So this is only in the industrial zones. So it's not allowed currently in, in commercial. So in the industrial zone, it's by permit only. I don't know if anyone has anything to add, or Sarah, you wanted to add anything?
Um, and just, the intent of putting some bylaws in place, since these sites can be put in industrial zones or zones that are intended for industrial uses per the state code. We did things like put a fifteen hundred foot buffer from residential. So that's the sort of thing that we can use zoning to control while still allowing the use as required by Mass General law. But offering a little bit more protection in your by residential properties.
But to be specific about where you live in Tridebby. They're considered a pre-existing non-conforming use. So they're there, the, the town can't make them go away. They're licensed by the state. They're one of the hazardous waste sites in the, in the state of Massachusetts.
Right, the town cannot make them go away, however, if they would like to do anything additional, the town can review that.
Right, and that's why we have that substantially improved.
Yeah, so we're just trying to figure out how we can make sure. We're checking, the reason we keep meeting over and over is to just make sure all loopholes are taken care of, and we're trying to catch everything, but, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, though.
But, a question to him, in the substantially improved, that would include something in a commercial area, not only industrial, right? Cause he's in a commercial.
Well, because it would meet, if, if it meets the definition for hazardous waste facility, then yes.
Yep.
Okay. So, because that is regardless of the zone, there's nothing in the definition.
So something substantially improved does not matter what zone it's in?
Right, because we're not specifying in this definition at all that it's located within an industrial district.
Thanks, you're welcome. Okay, great, so thank you, Sarah, this was really helpful.
Alright, I'll be in touch with the edits very soon.
Okay, so we have time, our hearing.
I just wanted to mention one thing, that we're voting on it at town meeting this year, so if it's important to you, you should get your neighbors to come out and support it. Because it doesn't become part of the bylaw until it's voted in at town meeting, which is in April.
Or attend the public hearing, so if you had people who wanted to talk or ask questions, we have a public hearing on all of our bylaws.
March third.
March third. So March third will be public hearing on all bylaws, so if you have questions or people wanna talk, um, definitely feel free to come and ask them all. That's a great question, or do we post all the, all the articles online?
Yeah, once I do the public hearing ad, um, which won't be for another couple of weeks. Then they're posted on, in the newspaper, we physically have copies in my office for people, and then they'll be online, on, on the town's website.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, so we have, we have our hearing not until seven o'clock, so we have some time until then. Kathy, you also distributed the.
Yep, what I, um, what I took was, um, you know, all the, um, edits from, uh, okay, sorry, Bob. I took all the, you know, the edits that you had made at the last meeting, and, um, just revised the, the bylaws. So this is a clean copy, this is, it, there's, it, there's no highlights, there's no, this is how it would go at town meeting, um, if this language is, you know, acceptable to everyone tonight. So, um, what I worked off of was the, um, most recent edits from, um, that Carrie had put together, that, that we've been using for the past couple of meetings. We used it on January sixteenth and January twenty-first. So, um, the, and then each page, just, just for ease of how they do the editing, um, in the town administrator's office, just each article is on a separate page, that's all. So I, if you want me, I don't know, how do you wanna do this, Carrie? Do you want me to go through what I had as edits from the last meeting?
Um, sure, does that sound okay with the board? Just to quickly do a spot, just run through it, okay.
So the, um, uh, at your last meeting on the twenty-first, um, there was actually no, um, you didn't make any edits to what was already done on the funeral home. So. So basically, you want to, you know, today, it's allowed by special permit in the RC and the GR district. So, um, the amendment is to, um, change that to now make it a prohibited use in the residential C and the GR. And then to change it from a prohibited use to a use by special permit, um, by the zoning board of appeals in the Main Street Residential District.
Okay, does that sound, does that, whatever it is, okay.
The next one, um, pertains to a new definition and, um, a change in the use tables for the definition for kennel. And so the, um, existing definition is shown, this is on page two, the existing definition is shown right in about the middle of the page, that's crossed out. Today, in our bylaw, it reads facility for breeding, sale, boarding or training of more than three dogs or other domestic non-farm animals. And you, um, want that replaced with a definition from the state, um, regs, and there were, um, a couple changes made to the state regulations, um, from the board. So the, um, the changes, and actually, you know what, I think I, I think I caught something, um, that I, that I need to fix. In the, in the definition for the state, it's defined as commercial dog kennel, commercial dog service. And, um, what the board talked about was just, again, keeping the word kennel, getting rid of all the commercial reference. And, um, using the definition from the state, but about halfway down, where it says absence of the owner of any such animal. We're adding, that includes more than three dogs, three months or older. And, in the very beginning, um, there's wording in the state bylaw that says commercial boarding or training kennel and establishment used for. And, um, the board talked about just starting with an establishment used for boarding. And somewhere, I thought I saw a commercial.
Well, I think right in the middle with the parentheses, where it says boarding or training kennel, does that have to just say kennel? Because that's what we're calling it? I'm not sure. If you look in the middle, after the three, year, three dogs, three months, provided however that, we have in parentheses, boarding or training kennel shall not include. shall not include an animal shelter. I was wondering if that should just say kennels should not include an animal shelter, because we don't have a definition for boarding or training kennel.
Actually, thank you, Amy, because that's where, in the state definition, it actually says, commercial boarding or training kennel. I took out commercial, but same thing, I think it needs to, I think you need to take out boarding or training.
Yeah.
Yes, I think so too.
And I don't know why kennel, why that's in quotes, but it's.
Yeah, maybe it doesn't have to even be in quotes.
I don't think it needs to be in quotes. I'm not an English major, but I don't, I, I think for this context, it's, I mean, it's a kennel, we're talking about a kennel.
Okay, does that, is that it?
And then, oh, and just as far as where the, the uses are, right now, a kennel is allowed by a special permit in the residential A. We changed that to no. And then in the commercial table, it's, we're keeping that it's allowed by a special permit in the business West. And the change is in the industrial, where now it's a prohibited use, and it's going to be changed to an allowed use.
Okay, is this to everybody's recollection?
Then on page three is the indoor, commercial recreation. So there's no definition, it's a, it's a use that's already in our table. And the only change is, is that it's in the, presently, it's a no in the industrial district, and you're going to change it to a yes.
And does that to everybody's recollection?
And number four, the, it's actually on, on, on page four and five. Because the chart is just, they're going to have to condense it for the warrant, but. The change is making the existing light manufacturing definition, it's now one long sentence. It's changing it to make it into two sentences and three lines up on page four. It reads, you know, radiation, heat, vibration, or noise, that's where it's going to end as a sentence. Just because you can barely see the punctuation, I just put that in italics. I don't know that that will go in the warrant, but I'm going to keep that in there throughout the public hearing process. And then we're getting rid of, provided that all, and then starting a new sentence further. And I don't think we need a comma there, but we could put one, further, all operations are located entirely, blah, blah, blah. That's what's in there.
Yep, okay, is that part to everyone's recollection?
Yep.
Yep.
And then as far as the use tables for industrial uses, the light manufacturing right now is an allowed use in the industrial district. And the proposal is to change it to a special permit by the planning board. Warehouse is an allowed use in the industrial district, and again, changing it to a special permit by the planning board. And then same with trucking, and same with contractors yard.
Okay, is that to everyone's recollection?
Yes.
The next one is home occupation. And from, for there, the definition is changing slightly to add what's underlined. That the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling as a residence. And then in B, you're changing the existing number one to read, not more than two non-residents. And then also striking except by special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Number two, you're striking except by special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And then you're adding, you're adding a number seven that would read, no more than one commercial motor vehicle may be parked in the driveway.
I just had a question. With the, um, commercial motor vehicle, will that cover heavy construction equipment? I, I'd sent an email, I think, to Kathy and Bob.
You did, Amy, and we have not, Bob and I have not had a chance to sit down together to go over that. I think I printed that email. I think I have it.
No, I forget to print it.
So the question is?
Well, I just had a concern with more than one commercial motor vehicle, if it's, if it, I know we had talked about registered versus unregistered. And I think heavy construction equipment is unregistered. So I just wanted to make sure the more than one commercial motor vehicle would also, see if it includes the heavy construction equipment too.
Generally, if you can put a plate on it, it's a registered motor vehicle.
Yeah, but do they put plates on backhoes?
It's the only way you can legally drive it on the street.
I know, but don't they put them up, sometimes they go up on the back of a trailer and go back and forth.
Sometimes it's on a trailer?
Yep.
Sometimes the backhoes actually have a plate directly attached to it.
I was just wondering if we could get more specific, just say no more than one commercial motor vehicle slash heavy construction equipment apparatus. Just because I did find the definition different when I tried to look it up online. Some definitions for a commercial motor vehicle includes construction equipment and others don't. So I just didn't want that also to be a question that people got stuck on.
Well, here's the thing, if you've got a backhoe with a front plow on it during a snowstorm and they plow your driveway, if they don't have a plate, they can't plow your driveway.
Right.
So you've got to be careful about, you know, what you can and can't allow. If somebody's operating backhoe out of their driveway and they've got a plate on it, that's a motor vehicle. It's subject to all the rules and regulations of the road and the state police truck team. So they're considered.
So you're saying if they have a plate on it, they could have as many as they want backhoes? Is that what you're saying? I just didn't understand it.
No, you were going after what's the definition of heavy equipment?
Oh.
And whether or not it's a vehicle. And I'm saying, my, my opinion, is that because it has a plate and it's subject to the rules of the road and other things like fenders, horns, windshields, windshield wipers, those are all the things that require you to have a roadworthy vehicle. Those are vehicles.
So is that included in this commercial motor vehicle? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So you can't have a van and a backhoe and a plow, or, because they all have a license, they all need to be registered. So when you say one commercial motor vehicle, you, it's literally one of those options, you can't like.
Right, so I think we talked before, not making it one, making it two. Because you may have a guy who has a trailer that he puts his lawnmower on, and then his truck, which then he attaches to the, the trailer to that. So you have two vehicles. So then you're eliminating anybody who does landscaping to bring their trail, which is, there's a ton of them. Their, their trailer with their truck, you can drive all around town, you see them, right? So I still think we should go back to two if you're going to define a trailer. Because I think there's a lot of people who have a trailer and a, and a truck.
We had and trailer before, but it came out, I don't know why, but it, what if you had more, no more than one commercial motor vehicle and one trailer? It, it did say originally one trailer, and then we took it off for some reason, and left it at this last time. But we could go back to the way it was. So we had, oh, we did have two, we went down to one, no more than two.
Yeah, the suggestion, the original.
Including trailers.
The original suggestion from last meeting was two commercial vehicles, including trailers. And then through, through the discussion, it was changed to one commercial vehicle may be parked in the driveway.
Well, does that mean you can put whatever you want in the lawn?
That's what I think we, that's kind of what I think we went around on.
I don't know. I don't know, that might get us, that might catch us there. Why did we say parked in the driveway? Oh, because originally we had provided that, and then we removed every, all of the conditions.
What about no more than two commercial motor vehicles on the property?
Period.
Period.
That's fine.
You know, it's hard, some people don't, their driveways are tiny, and then they got this, not really paved, but it's an area that's clear that they'll put it there. So I don't want you, Bob, going out and trying to define what constitutes a driveway, right? Nor does a homeowner or a business owner.
One of the biggest surprises to me is that in Northborough, for a residential use, you don't need to have a paved surface. You do need a paved surface for every other type of use in town for vehicles, but for residential, it, it's not required. And it's, it's quite surprising, because we have a lot of protections for groundwater and everything else. And I think it's something.
That's town meeting twenty twenty-one. Yeah, we should put it in our notes to start next month for next year.
So I'd make a motion to the board about no more than two commercial motor vehicles on the property.
Is there a second on that?
I'm seconded.
Any further discussion on that? Does that sound like?
I agree with that.
Okay, all in favor of that?
As long as it includes the construction equipment.
They'd be parked on the property.
Yeah, and is that okay, Kathy, to just?
Yep.
Okay. All right, good, I'm glad you brought that up, Amy, that was a.
Right, and then the last one is relating to the waiver that's associated with duplexes. And the, you know, proposal from the planning board is to eliminate the footnote, so footnote one. And again, just in case someone goes home and like looks at this with a magnifying glass, the, the footnote is crossed out, even though it looks like it's underlined, but it's crossed out in the table. It's just how. Mine looks crossed out. Footnotes are in the next.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay. Is this to everybody's recollection?
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Okay, great, so.
Can we actually go back, we went really fast through one section, and I, I don't mind revisiting, because my notes might say something different. But going back to the recreation and entertainment on, which is page three on the updated version. What I had in my notes that we were in the use table, that we were going to allow it by right in the highway business. And here it has it appeals, does anybody have that? I don't know if we changed that. Does anybody else have that? So it's the.
For the indoor, indoor recreation.
Yeah.
Right, that one, Millie, yeah, I don't.
Yeah, so page four on the, yeah, so I had that, unless I'm looking at it.
So you know what, my charts, this is the wacky one, my charts.
That's what the wacky one, never mind. Okay, never mind.
No, I'm glad you asked, I completely confused everyone in my effort to make things easier.
We're good, that's what it was.
Okay, so Kathy, we've, I believe we made motions to put these forward, do you need anything else?
No, I'm, I'm good, so we'll add the, the edits tomorrow. And then, like I said, we'll go forward, when I looked at the calendar and your meetings and, you know, advertising deadlines and so forth. March third is your first meeting in March, so that will be when you start your public hearing on this.
Okay.
And then typically, you would continue it, you know, into your second meeting in March. And then possibly equal to your, you know, if you needed to, into your first meeting in April.
Okay, great, so that is March third.
Or just historically, that's how you've done it, at least, you know, at least kept it open to, to me.
Okay, so that's March third and seventeenth for our hearings on all of these bylaws. The opening is on the third, likely continue to the seventeenth. Okay, and that's when the public will have a chance to come and ask any questions, and there'll be the public hearing for that.
Yep, and I will have, you know, revised articles that will, you know, be set up for the public to read them, along with all the boards and so forth. Within a couple of weeks, we'll have those available as a public document.
Okay, great. All right, it is just about seven oh five, and we have the continued public hearing for four twenty-five Whitney Street. Special permit site plan approval and special permit per groundwater protection overlay district. The applicant is Staris, engineer VHP, the date filed is September seventeenth. So we are here today to review the response that we received to the original planning board memo. Hello, welcome back. Is it just you today, or?
No, the rest of the project teams in the hallway answering questions.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure, well, that's great, because we have to get, I'm going to get situated anyway, so if you want to bring them in, they're welcome. Yep.
First, can I thank the board for the continuations you've granted us to provide this response, but we appreciated the extra time.
Oh, great, you're welcome.
So and then, and just before they start with their presentation, what everybody has is a bound, bond, a bound booklet of all of the additional information that you requested.
Are you going to do a chart? A couple, three, four minutes ago. Much better over here.
Worked through that last night.
I didn't know.
You and Nellie. Not, not that bad, just a left and a right.
Okay, so you're gonna, are you setting something up over here?
Yeah, if you want the site plan, otherwise I was going to just go through the, the memo is about sixteen pages, really, of the responses that I was going to walk through with the board.
Oh, can you stand down here, because then we can see you on camera? How's that, is that better? Yeah, yeah.
So with me this evening are Rich Whitehouse from VHP, the site engineer. Pete Renack from Staris, and Mike Corelli, plant manager, Staris. So before you this evening, the response of the planning board issued a letter in November, a three-page letter requesting additional information, some of the information was required by your rules and rights. So we provided almost all of that, if you had a chance to look at the memo. The only thing that is outstanding is the acoustic study. Staris has retained an acoustic engineering firm, they're identified in the memo. We met with the gentleman this evening, so he started to prepare that acoustic study. I learned a lot about what's required for the acoustic study, so that will be forthcoming. So that's one, that's an open item, if you will. But then if I may, the first page of the memo was the responses, so I cut and pasted each of the items that the planning board identified and provided responses to each and every one of those. The first was relative to the proposed use, as the board has heard in the past. Products are received at this facility and they're not removed from their packaging, they're put on a conveyor belt and they're processed through a shield. The shield is an electron beam, there is no radioactive material at the premises. It's a machine that goes on and off, and it irradiates with an electron beam the products and sterilizes them. So there's no ethylene oxide, I know that's a big concern for irradiating with radioactive products, that's not this process. The next was the traffic report that we obtained from the NACE associates, that's in your packet as exhibit B. I want to inform the board that my statement that the new use would be, would have sixteen more trips per week than the prior use of the architectural mill, that must have been from the first draft of the traffic report, because the actual traffic report says it's a decrease. If you, that's exhibit B, and there's the conclusions of the traffic engineer. Part two on page A, it reads, in comparison to the former architectural millwork company, the occupied project site, that occupied the project site, the project is expected to generate sixty fewer vehicle trips on an average weekday and a hundred ninety-six fewer vehicle trips on a Saturday, with two fewer vehicle trips expected during the weekday morning peak and eight fewer vehicle trips expected during the weekday evening peak hour and twenty-three fewer vehicle trips expected during Saturday midday peak hour. On balance, the project will result in comparable traffic volumes and impacts of those of the former architectural millwork company. So I know that's a standard in the site plan review, is there an increase? So if you rely on the final traffic report rather than what I put in the narrative. The next questions were about public and water, the available water supply is adequate relative to soar service. We're proposing to extend. We're proposing to extend the sewer line and abandon in accordance with applicable code the onsite septic. Next page relative to permits that were required as the board is aware we did apply for and were granted a dimensional variance. That has been appealed in the land court and that litigation is pending. That's for the addition that is shown on the site. We did receive an order of conditions from the conservation commission. That is included in the packet as an exhibit. And I think what's noteworthy for the board in there, there is a special condition of the, in the order of conditions relative to the temporary concrete plant that the board was concerned about. So that's, you'll see that in the later responses relative to that issue. As you know, we're also applying for the special permit for the groundwater protection overlay district. We did supply as exhibit, as an exhibit, the groundwater report. That's, I think, exhibit C. Also, of course, there was licensing required from the Mass Department of Public Health relative to the electron beam for xraying the products. So this is an area occupied by the Commonwealth, the regulation of this technology. And if, you know, the board's probably aware of that concept of preemption, if the Commonwealth occupies an area wholly with a comprehensive regs, they have a superior sovereign, if you will, so they have jurisdiction over this technology. And this is, of course, on the inside of the building, the use of that technology. So those, the applicable regulations of the Department of Public Health are listed later in the memo. And next, the bottom of page three, the size of the building. The existing building is 45,753 square feet. We propose two additions, the larger one, 20,100 square feet, the smaller one, 3,400, for a total of 69,253 square feet. The project is estimated to have 25 full-time employment positions in town. Relative to parking, we provide 38 parking spaces, which is the number required under the zoning bylaw. Relative to screening, we didn't put up the site plan, but there is a planning plan that was included in the site plan submitted, so I just referenced that for that. And relative to lot coverage, the existing lot coverage of the property is 21% with the addition. Now, the parking lot is pretty much staying the same, the curb cut is the same as existing. Proposed lot coverage with the addition would be 33%. Industrial office campus master plan I thought was not applicable. Number 11 was list any other information the applicant believes will assist the planning board in reviewing and understanding the site plan application. I just wanted to reiterate for the board that is, this is an existing commercial building constructed in 1980 in the industrial zoning district. Again, we're using the existing curb cut and the existing parking lot. The applicant's proposed use is allowed as a right in the industrial zoning district as light manufacturing as determined by the building inspector in his capacity as interpreter of the zoning bylaw. Okay, moving on, these are the standards relative to site design contents. So most, almost all of this information I think is shown on the plans that we submitted, existing boundaries to the site. There are no changes to the existing property boundaries. It's the lot as it currently exists. The site area and zoning classifications, again, it's in the industrial zoning district and also in the groundwater district, three overlay district. Ownership of a budding land. The site is bound on two sides by, you might know this owner, Anza Santo of 429 Whitney Street Railroad Trust, and then on the other side by consolidated rail coverage. So we're not abutting any residential owners. Of course, the fourth boundary is the Whitney Street. The next details are about the site plan. I think that's, the information is all on the site plan. If the planning board had any questions about the site plans that's submitted, we can go through those items. The site is not located in a mapped floodway district. The next items on page six relate to the grading and drainage of the plan as proposed that are shown on the site plan, the nature of location and size of all significant existing natural land features. Those are shown on the existing conditioned site plan. I don't know if there's anything in particular the board would like us to focus on, proposed surface treatments of paved areas. We did submit a grading and drainage and erosion control plan and a utility plan. So all that information I think was provided in the site plans as appropriate for the site plan. Turning to page seven. Plans and documents illustrating proposed system of waste product collection and treatment and disposal. Again, the proposal is to abandon and remove the existing septic system and to extend the sanitary sewer line to service the building. Proposed stormwater management, it's exhibit D that the stormwater report is provided. And I believe that was approved by the conservation commission and the town engineer is reviewing for the groundwater advisory committee. Number 18 on page seven is proposed lighting. We did submit, we did obtain a photometric plan and that shows the lighting on the site for the parking area. It's exhibit E in your packet. Next item was about plant types and referred to the planning plan and planning details that were submitted to the site plan. I can move on to development impacts. Traffic, again, I refer to the traffic report that is exhibit B that shows the decrease from the prior use to the proposed use. Environmental impacts. The project, my response was the project will comply with all applicable federal and state environmental regulations relative to surface water, groundwater and flooding potential. See the stormwater report. And again, the stormwater report was reviewed and approved by the conservation commission and the town engineer. And then relative to radioactive emissions, there will be no radioactive emissions or other hazardous materials released from the property. The sterilization operation does not utilize or create radioactive material. And that's an important factor. The other question concerns solar access and to the best of our knowledge, no adjacent properties will be impacted by the project relative to solar access. Noise impacts, I mentioned to the board that we have retained tech environmental wall standards the company to undertake that acoustic study. And light impacts are pursuant to the photometric plan. Fiscal impacts was the next topic. And of course, there's a benefit to the town in North Carolina having a vacant warehouse occupied and expanded and 25 full-time jobs relative to fiscal impact for the town. There'll be no foreseeable increase in demand for public services arising from the applicant's There should be no adjacent, there should be no impact on adjacent property values attributable to the applicant's use and occupancy of the vacant commercial building in the industrial zoning district. The building has been in use for commercial industrial purposes since 1980. The next questions were about community impact and the architectural character of the building. You know, the building exists and the addition will be consistent with the existing style of the building in the industrial zoning district. Okay, now we turn to, again, to that question of light manufacturing use. The board asked, how is the use allowed in industrial zoning district? So looking at the definitions and industrial uses, light manufacturing includes processing. And when you apply the standard, or I, you know, I pulled a dictionary off my shelf, it was a bit dated, but nonetheless, I think the common use of the term processing is applicable and there's no definition in the bylaw. And the definition is a process is a systematic series of actions directed to some end, continuous action, operation or series of changes taking place in a definite manner. So in light of how I described to the board, these operations, certainly processing of goods and materials in that they will be run through the shield. And, you know, the building inspector has determined, I believe town council has weighed in as well, in concurrence with the building inspector's determination that the proposed use qualifies as light manufacturing in the industrial zoning district. If you have any questions on that or any of these as I go through it, but I'm up to page 10, that's the good news. The next item was for all indoor and outdoor activity buildings. This was relative to noise. Again, we do not yet have the acoustic study, but we have retained tech environmental. We met with the gentleman this evening. That work has commenced. And relative to lighting, we have the photometric plan. Provide levels of radioactive emissions. There will be no radioactive emissions to either air or water and no radiation doses rates outside of the shield exceeding, now this is in some language I'm not, 2.0, I don't know what DMR stands for obviously, but, and then it references the CMRs that govern this type of use, the regulations of the Department of Public Health. Again, the radiation level outside of the shields, shields is that contained area for the products that get run away, the xray beam. Then number five was details of how the process, how it fits the use. So we provided an outline of the xray operations in exhibit F, which shows the technology. Then it is about, you know, I didn't tell you I didn't decipher it too much in terms of, you know, but it is a xray machine. I wanted more information on that. Of course, this is inside the building about the use. The next item was describe the treatment center versus other areas of production. The treatment center is the shield area in the building where x-rays are applied to goods and products. The other areas are operations and controls and general warehousing. Now, just, you know, I just add, I've said this all along, that even though we can talk about the use, we're happy to talk about the use, but we're here for the site plan, the use is not subject to a special permit. I believe it's in a lot of use in the industrial zoning industry. But to away fears of what this operation is, we're happy to provide all of this information and answer questions about it. I went on to page 12 if I could. The next was give a list of hazardous materials to be permanently stored in the building. We just most recently updated that. As you may recall, there was a question as to whether the chillers would have antifreeze in them and it's gonna, they're gonna be water chilled. There will be no antifreeze. So this is our most recently submitted on January 22nd revised list of chemicals. As you see, it's for use in the industrial zones, my opinion, pretty limited. And that's included in exhibit C as well. Next topic of inquiry was the groundwater. Drainage runoff impacts surrounding land and any possible flooding. I referred you to the groundwater study prepared by VHP, which is included as exhibit D. If you have questions about that, you know, Mr. Whitehouse could field those. And part B of that on the bottom of page 12, you referenced the concrete plant on the surrounding land. And this is where I referenced, I had the wrong exhibit number or letter, it should be exhibit G, is the order of conditions and special condition number 47 governs the temporary concrete plant, which states that no site work, no site work on a temporary concrete plant shall be given until plans and specifications that include, but are not limited to erosion control measures, construction sequencing, details on dewatering, mobilization and demobilization and daily operation and maintenance are approved by the commission or its agent and the town engineer. So I know the board expressed concern about that method of construction. There is oversight by both the conservation commission and the town engineer by this Moving on to landscaping. So it asks if it'd be landscaping dirt for the concrete plant. The answer was no, but we will adhere to, of course, the limit of hours of construction as set forth in the zoning bylaw. And you heard from the concrete, temporary concrete plant owner who informed the board that it's his economic interest to get in and get out because he makes money over utilizing that machine on different sites. So he's incentivized to pour the concrete for the addition and then wrap it up and go on to the next study, not have it linger. If that was a concern, that would be on site. Next question is concerning trucks and traffic. Again, we, the applicant will hear the limitation on construction activity is set forth in the zoning bylaw. Once, then you ask what would be the hours of operation after construction? The facility would operate 24 hours, seven days a week, but the external operations will be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The internal operations may occur beyond those hours, but the external would be limited. How many trucks trips per day? It is estimated there will be 15 to 20 truck trips to or from the property each business What is the noise associated with trucks? This was kind of difficult because it's typical or usual noises associated with truck traffic would be at the property in the industrial zoning district. But the applicant will hear the federal and state regulations. As you know, the Commonwealth has an anti-idling reg. I think that's required to be posted. But I did reference that the zoning bylaw excludes noise produced by registered motor vehicles from jurisdiction under zoning. Will there be temporary lighting placed during construction? No. List of materials to be stored in trucks overnight? The materials that might be stored in the truck overnight are the consumer products that get processed, nothing hazardous. It would be bandages, you know, new medical devices, no used medical equipment or no hazardous materials. It's product that is awaiting processing or waiting, delivered to its next destination. So now I'm onto the peer review, which I think, again, you're inside the building relative to the use, which is why we're happy to provide this information. One question, is the thickness and positioning of the concrete walls, floor and ceiling adequate? Our answer is yes. The concrete shield, which includes walls, ceiling and floor, has been designed specifically for the sterilization operations by a company registered with the Mass Department of Public Health for shielding design. You asked if there was a decommissioning plan. I learned that with no radioactive material on the site to use for the radiation, it's the electron beam that you can turn on and off, there's nothing to decommission. That's usually required, I was told, when you have that material that you have to send to a gate in Utah or someplace to have it properly disposed of. That's not this operation. Safety plans in the event of an accident or disaster? The control system for the sterilization equipment includes a combination of manual and automatic shut-offs. If the operators determine that the sterilization system must be shut down quickly, there are emergency stop buttons. If the operators are incapacitated, the system will automatically shut down. You asked, are there adequate cleanup plans? If hazardous materials spill, leak, released into the environment? The sterilization system does not create or cause opportunities for hazardous materials to spill, leak, or to be otherwise released from or out of the property. There will be no radioactive material on the property. Next asked about the Mass DPH Department of Public Health oversight. The sterilization system will comply with all applicable regulations of the Commonwealth. And then relative to any federal regulations, the Commonwealth regulations aren't consistent with any federal regulations, so compliance with the state level satisfies any federal standards. Again, we cited all the applicable CMRs, which are adopted by the Mass Department of Public Health pursuant to the general laws, which I brought copies of if you want those for your file. You asked, is there degradation of concrete over time? What is the life expectancy of concrete under these conditions? The response is there is no degradation of the concrete over time. There is no limitation on the life expectancy of the concrete. How often does it? How often does it need to be inspected, replaced? What type of reporting, reporting should be required? The shield, excuse me, would be inspected annually during the shield survey or after a natural disaster such as an earthquake or other unlikely event which would cause damage to the shield. Does the concrete need to be coated? The answer is no. Does it require lead bricks? The answer is no. What health risks are we aware of from the operations? There are no health risks from the sterilization operations outside of the shield. Risk to employees inside the facility will be controlled by machine safety interlocks, which immediately shut down power to the machine if activated. Again, this is that beam technology. Are there risks of explosions? No. Leakage risks? The initial shield surveys by a qualified expert will determine if additional shielding is needed prior to commencement of operations. Environmental impact? There are no specific environmental impact standards applicable to the sterilization technology. The sterilization system is designed so that radiation is contained within the shield. It's no radioactive, no radioactive, radioactive material will be stored or used at the property. And we will adhere to the monitoring requirements of the Mass Department of Public Health, which require continuous radiation, radiation monitoring in the treatment of shield area. You know, they, STERIS has an interest, of course, in this home employee protection for the operations. Again, the level of noise and ground vibration, that's the outstanding item with tech environmental. Hours of operations over inspection and maintenance, this I think is relative to the chillers. So the chillers are required to operate the sterilization system, so it's in the applicant's interest that to monitor and maintain the chillers in good working order. The chillers will be air chilled with circulated water. It's substantial investment, so STERIS doesn't have an interest in having these chillers go down. They will maintain them and ensure that they work properly. Potential impact on utilities? None. The local utility company's power grid will support the facility. Levels of carbon dioxide emissions by large use of electricity? None at the property. And that was, I don't know if it happens somewhere at the plant, electrical plant or something, but not, not here. Radiation monitoring inside and outside the cell? I referred you back to the responsive Bob, that monitoring inside the shield area, there's no need to monitor the outside of the facility, but the planning board asked if a device could be installed in the exterior of the building that could monitor radiation levels? The answer to that is yes. There is such technology. Then you asked about recording and reporting of radiation levels. That is all pursuant to the CMRs that are referenced in that response. Again, this you had flagged for peer review as well, but we provided responses for both, you know, interested voters and the board's information. Proof this level of radiation is safe? The shield surveys will be performed and documented per the internal procedure specified in 105 CMR 120. You asked, how often is the shield? Onto page 18, so this is near the end. What is the shield survey? How often should it be performed? So shield survey is the process of using an appropriate and calibrated handheld radiation survey instrument on the exterior surfaces of concrete walls and roof of the shield to verify that any radiation levels present are below the regulatory limits. Shield surveys required to be performed when the accelerator is first capable of producing radiation and whether have been any changes to the shielding equipment, operation of the equipment, or use of adjacent areas. In addition, the applicant will voluntarily perform shield surveys on an annual schedule. Regular shield surveys must be performed by qualified, by a qualified expert acceptable to the Commonwealth. These acceptable experts are registered with the Mass Department of Public Health. Again, this is an area occupied by the Commonwealth for that oversight and, of course, we have to comply with those regulations and we'll do more than that with the annual survey. That's about it. The rest was kind of for peer review as well, but you did ask again about the decommissioning. And with no radioactive material, you don't think, there's nothing to decommission.
Okay, is there anything you want to show or is this?
Well, for all those references to this, to the site plan, if you want to see those site plans, I mean, I don't know if you have smaller sheets of paper, but we have those. Other than proof of this study, I think we've provided almost everything that came into that story.
Okay, thank you. So to start, I think what we had intended as part of this exercise is to receive the response from the applicant and then at that time determine what, what did we want to actually go up for peer review? So based on now the information that we have here, what, what other questions or anything else that we had in our original memo or additional clarification that we would want as part of a peer review process? So what would make sense for us, based on what we wanted to? So I don't know if we have, if the board has, so I guess what we'll do is why don't we get some board questions and then open it for public? This is a public hearing. And then we'll try to come to a conclusion on what we want for additional peer review? What's, what pieces of this do we want additional peer review? Does that sound good to the board?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Kathy, do you have?
I was just gonna say, I should've said this in the very beginning. We have a new person that will be doing the minutes starting tonight.
Yeah.
As of tonight. So if, and she'll be able to read the nameplates, I believe, but if you just all state what your name, who your name, what your name is, with like maybe your first initial question so she can catch that, and then when we have members of the, you know, STERIS team and then any of the public, because this is, you know, she's done plenty of ones before in other towns, but, you know, you're all new to her.
Sure, that sounds fine. Millie, do you want to just move your microphone? Or just when you want to talk at least, your microphone is moved out.
Okay. Okay, so questions from the board?
Would anyone like to start?
I just have one quick one. On page 10, you said it emits a small gas. Do you know what type of gas that is?
I don't, I, some of these responses were provided by experts in the field, you know, that are, and I don't want to guess and misinform the board. I can get that.
Okay. That was the only thing.
But I know, as it was provided to me, below any reportable level.
Right. I was just curious what it was.
That's on page 10, right?
Yep.
Michelle?
Just two questions. I actually just received this last night, but on your addendum B, when you talk about the traffic study and you're comparing it to the previous use, did this consultant, Vanessa and Associates, do a traffic study on the previous use? I mean, how'd they get the data from that?
That's from IT numbers based on the area of existing building.
Okay, so there was never tra, it's just standard, it comes from like standard traffic studies that you guys do, the size of the building, the location?
Exactly. It's industry practice for estimating traffic generation for various uses.
Okay. And so then, I know in here it states that you'll have weekend trips as well as weekday trips, right? Is that my, okay. So it said in 98 vehicle trips on Saturdays, both to, is that, is that gonna be, when it's inactive and the company is open, there's gonna be 98, you know, meaning going back and forth vehicles on like a Saturday and a Sunday or just a Saturday?
Those are the rules.
Does that say less trips on Saturday?
It's fewer than the prior use.
Okay.
And that would be employee traffic. Trucking would be during the week only.
Okay.
Sorry, just to clarify, so you don't have a real baseline? It's just an estimate on a industry standard, but not real baseline numbers?
Well, the site's vacant now, so you can't, you know, the study couldn't consider what, what the traffic generation was from the prior use because it's vacant. So I'm not a traffic engineer, but my understanding is that in that case, and when you need to do estimations for things that you can't currently enact with the count, ITB is the Institute for Transportation Engineering. They provide, similar to Title V and other, and other documents, they provide numbers that we use in the industry, kind of across the board for estimating based on an area of particular use within the facility, and that's what they apply.
I guess the reason I was asking was if this is a consulting firm that does a lot of these traffic studies? They may have done a traffic study prior for the prior applicant. I was just curious if they use the data. If there was any data that they had, like was a traffic study done for?
Not from them. Others may have, but they, they in particular.
Okay. And then just again back to traffic, but on, that's the traffic, you're in use, right? That's your data right there for addendum B, right? So this one you also noted was traffic route for building, when you're building out the property, right? You're saying 15 to 20 trucks a day, right? But not on weekends, is that correct? That was just a statement that you made. I just wanted to make sure I got that right.
Oh, no, I think that was from the operations. It depends on which, where the, what question I was responding to.
Okay.
The traffic, just for the board, it's under the tab B.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. But he made a comment about 15 to 20 trucks, not on weekends. I thought you were talking, was it the build-out of the property or?
I think that was.
That was a concrete plant.
Okay.
So this seems to blend both construction and data then. For during operations, yeah, so that's during operations.
Okay.
When the property is completed in operation.
Okay. And so just looking at Whitney Street coming, go ahead. I mean, I don't know if this is, we're not even at that point yet, but for consideration, could, could your trucks come off of 495, go down near the mall area, loop in the backway versus going down a residential neighborhood to get to it?
They can't go over the bridge.
The weight restriction on the bridge that's between the facility and the residential area would limit that.
Okay. So you have to come in through that way?
No, it's worth it.
Okay, got it. Okay. All right. So in here, when you're talking about trucks, that's during construction and during use period as well? Okay.
The numbers reported in here, I believe, more for the operations phase.
Okay.
These were both about, the questions were about both, but they're kind of blended together.
Okay. So maybe the board could get a little more clarification on that, but, okay. And when do you think your acoustic study will be done?
We're hoping maybe a month. It takes a good amount of time to get baselines and everything else, and at this time of year, it's probably dependent a month, so.
Okay. Because if you'd want the peer review to analyze, to, you know, look at that data, it's just gonna push further.
So can everyone just identify themselves?
Oh, Michelle Gillespie. Yep, sorry.
We immediately forgot your instructions.
I know.
Is it for me?
That's it, okay. Anything down here, please state your name first.
Sure. Anthony Zaitin. I just want to touch on decommissioning. Now, I understand there's no radioactive material or hazardous waste material. I think where my concern lies with decommissioning is what's gonna be left over with these 12-foot walls and 12-foot ceilings and what is the effort and cost to remove that material should STERIS, you know, leave or go bankrupt or whatever the case may be. I understand you don't have an answer for that necessarily.
Well, so they don't intend, you know, the investment is from the long term, obviously. Purchase price for the parcel, you know, it's on record, $6 million. So there's value in the property as is, so in that troubling scenario of STERIS going out of business, I mean, I think there's still value in this parcel in the industrial zoning district that a buyer would take and discount the demo cost if it hasn't been demoed already. I mean, I don't think properties stay off the market if they, there's some, you know, structure that needs to be modified for a buyer, it gets considered in a future owner's purchase price.
I just think with the, the size of the walls and the ceilings, it's kind of extraordinary and kind of outside of the norms, and that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, no, I get it would be some, you know, hindrance maybe to selling the property if you didn't remove it yourself, but I think a buyer would factor that in purchase price.
I've still got concerns around the concrete plant. It's still relatively near to residential properties and concerned about the impact to those neighborhoods, noise and, you know, dust, whatever other things that may occur from that. And that's where I think the peer review would be important. And the only other question, kind of, I don't know how relative it is, but what, do you guys know what direction that beam is gonna be facing?
It's contained in the shield, so the direction is still, regardless of what it is, it's fully contained in the shield. And the temporary concrete plant, it sure is poor, right? No boards in the, in the concrete. It has a benefit of it, one of the benefits of it.
Okay. So I had.
So, one of-
Just say your name.
Oh, Millie Milton. One of my concerns is that this is the first one that you guys have built, is that correct? For the, this type of radiation sterilization? So there aren't any existing in the United States?
No in the United States, correct.
Yeah. And so with your information, where are you getting that from with the, what will or will not be existing outside the walls or what's in the concrete? Because it talks about having to, certain levels of, I believe they're renkins, that would be measured in the concrete a year or so later? Is that coming from another facility or?
It's a matter of function of the power generated by the beam.
Okay.
And time, distance, and shielding are your protections against the exposure of that beam. And I will say that there is an existing beam in the, in the, that we can use that data from, but the, the data is, is all, whether it's actually generating, whether the penetration of the concrete beams through the materials is, is what determines the thickness of those materials and what else is needed.
Okay. And so it, it talks about no potential for a dose exceeding .1 renkins in a year outside the shield? Is that after it's been no longer used or do you know what that's referring to?
Well, it's, well, it's about the, so basically, basically, your outdoor exposure to the sun.
Yeah.
You'll get more radiation from the sun than you will from the city.
Okay.
When you're in the plane, you're close to the space, you're susceptible to, you know, that radiation and that, that's what it's more susceptible to.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add, that would go to zero when machines off. That's storing operation. If there's no, if there's nothing being created, there's not gonna be anything.
Right. It just, when it says no potential for a dose exceeding .1 in a year outside the shield. So, but that's, what you're saying is basically almost atmospheric radiation.
And that's the state regulations.
Okay. Okay. That, that's it for me for now, till I read it.
Okay, great. Carrie Martinek, first, thank you for putting this together. This is really comprehensive and I appreciate the effort that went into it. Just a couple of questions from me. So actually, one for Bob. Is the concrete plant a temporary structure or no? It is a temporary structure. So then there are temporary structure bylaws around temporary structures that? So then there are temporary structure bylaws around temporary structures that?
Well, I would think if it's a large enough construction site, you probably want a protective fence around the perimeter to make sure you keep unauthorized, unauthorized personnel out.
Okay, so just, I'm just wondering because temporary structure has certain bylaws around it that I just want to make sure where, you know, of course you're aware, I'm not pointing on anything new, but I just, I, I think it has like certain time limitations. Is there anything different about a temporary structure?
Temporary structures are good for six months.
Okay.
Subject to extension by my authorization.
Okay. So in that case, the temporary structure has a six-month period? Okay.
Subject to extension of my approval.
Right, 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 okay. All right, that's good to know, thank you, that was a question I had. Okay, the letter of additional chemicals from January twenty-second. That's exhibit C. Okay, so we do have a copy of that, are we?
I did not include all of the, can I just, sit back because otherwise, I think it was like a hundred and twenty pages.
That's okay, I just want to make sure. So Fred, you got this letter, did you, did we get this letter as well? Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that, I didn't look at it. What was the additional components that were added?
It's a lot of, a lot of chemicals of, you know, like a cleaning, degreasing nature. They're listed, and if you're looking at exhibit C.
Yep.
They're listed starting at the bottom, under, I don't know, starting at the bottom, first is, I believe, yeah.
Oh, okay, so these are the additionals that weren't there before?
Yep, and it's, it's also noteworthy that in the, in the original instance of this letter, the applicant had anticipated a hundred and ten gallons of transformer oil that would be used within the facility. That's since been removed, so, you know, that was obviously the most substantial chemical that would have been stored. So that's a, it's a big benefit. The rest is, you can see, it's, it's cans of, of various items for, you know, for cleaning, things like that. And most importantly, they would all be stored inside a flammable cabinet, which was, you know, noted for, for the methanol and acetone that was included in the original, that was a flammable cabinet that would be set up inside the building that would contain all of these chemicals.
Okay, so this came back to groundwater?
Yep, I filed, so I filed this, the full version of the revised memo just today. And the hope is to appear before the groundwater advisory committee next Tuesday.
Okay, that answers my question. I wasn't sure if you already went or you're going, okay. Yep, great, thank you. The next question was about ownership of a budding land. So on the previous pages, a note, or one of the pages, there's a note about a appeal that was filed by one of the neighboring properties, but not included here. Is that just not a direct of butter?
I was looking at the plan, honestly. I know I looked at a plan when I wrote that, so, and I, I think we, I think they're within the radius, but they're not a direct. Okay, yeah, it might be within the radius.
Oh, but not a direct butter?
I know I ran the surveys, I mean, the boundaries when I wrote the response.
Okay. Let's see. Okay. So one thing that, I just want to make sure I understand, because I've, I've asked it a few times and I keep either misunderstanding it or I keep hearing different answers. So there, I realize the materials are not radioactive, but there is some sort of radiation that comes from the beam. There are two beams now, right? So there is radiation present. Yes. Correct, okay. Okay, so that's what I'm trying to say, because it goes back and forth. So for example, there is no, let's see. This processing will not emit odor, smoke, cinders, refuse matter, electromagnetic, electromagnetic radiation, heat, vibration, or noise. So it is not emitting electromagnetic radiation.
Not from the building, yes.
Well, the processing will not emit odors, blah, 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 electromagnetic radiation. It's, so the beam is not emitting radiation.
I took emitting to mean outside of the building, emitting is to release, so it's contained within the shield.
Well, if the process is inside, wouldn't that be inside? The process, you're not processing outdoors. So you're saying the processing will not emit it?
No. It means it will be contained within the shield, so it won't emit from the building.
Oh, okay, I interpret that as whatever the process is, that process will not be emitting.
What page are you on? Ten?
So ten. Okay, and then, let's see.
Inside, just not outside.
But, all right, and then later specifies radioactive emissions outside the shield. Okay. I think we interpret that a little differently, but that's, I just wanted to clarify that. Let's see. So also the question about controlling dust. I see that number forty-six of special conditions said no site work, you know, the, the order conditions issued by Conservation Commission and, oh, not, not you Fred, that was just Conservation Commission. Are you familiar with these conditions? So how does that condition number forty-six address dust control? Is that?
Does, at the time of, I believe, at the time of the Conservation Commission held the hearing, the whole process of how the operation of the temporary concrete plant wasn't completely known, made available to them. And in order to close the hearing, the commission said, you will meet with the conservation agent and the town engineer to review all aspects of the operation of the temporary concrete plant prior to, to starting construction. So that all those details will be reviewed by the conservation agent and myself prior to them starting any work.
Okay, so-
Includes the dust control.
That does.
The thing that the commission was significantly concerned about was the washing of the concrete tubs and trucks and the part that they spend the concrete to make it very consistency. When at the end of the day, when that's done, they wash out the tubs in order to make sure that wasn't getting into the drainage system for the wetland. And that exactly how that process was going to work wasn't known at the time, so that commission put in two safeguards.
Okay, it just doesn't explicitly address dust control, so I just wanted to make sure.
Not explicitly, but it, it gives us pretty much direct launch to review everything associated with the temporary concrete plant.
And we are in the process of procuring that package to bring back in front of the committee.
Got it.
Can you just say your name, please?
Fred, I'm sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
So you're gonna bring that information?
We're gonna prepare our, our plan of operations and storage and all that stuff and bring it back to those folks.
Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission and the, and the officer. And go through, make sure that they're happy with everything and then go in front of their board again to get approval before anything can proceed.
Okay, does that answer your question? Because they didn't discuss any of the dust. And so they're saying you're bringing back a plan that's going to address that and going back to Conservation.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Because I think they would want to be concerned about what's going in the air, not just groundwater. But now that you're saying they are.
Correct.
Go and address it, okay.
Well Fred, you've said before you don't address what goes in the air, you address what goes in the ground. But you will, but this process does address what goes in the air.
It does involve as part of any construction activity.
Okay, thank you.
Not necessarily under the purview of Conservation, but Conserva, uh, the whole general construction process.
Okay. Let's see, sorry, I think that. Outside of, let's see. Okay, those are my questions for now. I think there are a couple areas where you mentioned there's no radioactive emissions that I continue to kind of go back and forth on because it sounds like we're saying two opposite things, both. I, I need to read through that a little more closely to work that out a little bit. But otherwise, I don't have any specific questions. Are there any other questions from the board? Any other questions? Okay, does staff have any questions? Fred, any questions?
Right.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I will open it up for a public, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay. And then if a lot of people have questions, we'll just try to make sure everybody gets a chance and then at some point we'll just cut it off and we'll go from there. But so continue. You had a question about-
Are the incoming material sort of sitting in trucks or is it put into someplace, you know, where, let's say, if the material itself is maybe my infections for example?
Yeah, so we talked about that before and the material on this specific site, or things like, I think they use the example of dog food or products that weren't necessarily like medical equipment or things like that that need to be sterilized. You can correct me if that's incorrect, but that was my understanding.
So Mike Corrali, I'm the manager at S F O S. So the materials that will be coming from-
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
The materials that will be coming in are new, just built off of any material of any sort of medical device, some consumables, Band-Aids, gauze, decapitated, any sort of materials like that, plastics, cardboard, paper material, but it is all brand new material not used. It's typically single-use devices. Product will come in on pallets, on tractor trailers, forklifts will unload the tractor trailers, and it will be stored in the warehouse until it is processed through the X-ray. Those pallets will then be put back onto the tractor trailers and sent to those manufacturers, distribution centers, where they will then go to the end users, hospitals, or whatever case may be. So there's no infectious, there is no reclamation type work, there is no decontamination done. It's all brand-new, single-use device that typically disposable after use.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, just state your name and street.
Jeffson. I believe I heard that with the catastrophic accident in which the operators were incapacitated, the system would automatically shut down. What triggers the automatic shutdown?
I don't think that was in here. Was there something that-
I thought I heard that.
No, it wasn't there, but I don't know what triggers the automatic shutdown.
If I may, Steve, so that was one of the responses given to me by the, it's Mr. Johnson's, I believe, actually, is that Johnson's, Jackson's, Jackson's, radiation expert. A description of the equipment, that it has an automatic shutdown. Does that provide more information on that from him?
But is there something that triggers, I don't know, at some point, what's the alert or alarm that triggers that shutdown? Is there anything? Oh, okay. All right, so maybe just something-
There's many different things that will start a shutdown. Anything that goes out of spec, from temperature to chill water flows to conveyors getting caught up, to emergency stops, to all different types of variables. So there's an array tied into the control system for shutdown purposes.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Yes.
Is there active X-ray radiation leakage detection within the work area directly adjacent to the containment area?
There's something inside? And you mentioned there's something also outside that exists as well. So there could be both indoor and outside. Okay.
Does the active detection serve to your system? Is that incorporated in the automatic shutdown?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Speed would be my third question, or-
In terms of how fast between- It sounded like it's immediate, like right away, yep.
Like, I'd like clarification on that.
That's correct. It's immediate. It's electric generated, so it's power interruption shutdown.
Well, when power shuts down, yes, power turns off immediately, light switch, or as speed of light. But the triggering of the shutting off is what I'm interested in.
Oh, right. So that's always sounds like we need clarification, right?
What's that?
So I think that part we need clarification. So what's that trigger and how fast that trigger? I got you. That is a good question. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes.
Why isn't there a noise study? They have a facility somewhere else, so I'm just curious why there's not any information. They have a facility located here in North Row now. They know some sort of idea of what the acoustics, the acoustic level is at that level. They have another facility somewhere in some other place. You know, why isn't there a study available? They say in the block, kind of, there is block.
So my understanding would be that we just need to get a consultant to do the acoustic study. Is there a delay, like a specific delay in this?
Well, and I think it's, especially in this situation, it's site-specific, because the noises that we're more concerned about are the equipment outside of the building. The noise that's going to be generated from these machines is not going to extend outside the building. They're within the shield of 12 feet of concrete walls. None of that noise is going to escape from that area.
Oh, no, but is there just a delay in contracting with them or-
Yeah, it took us a little while to get a couple of work crew and get somebody contracted, and he started some of his groundwork now, but he's got to do seven-day studies for baseline.
Oh, so it's not beginning in a month? It takes that amount of time?
No, I'm hoping that it'll be done and his report will be complete in approximately a month.
Okay, so does that answer your question? Are you asking a different question?
There's a facility here already, so we know that there's a noise coming from that facility. It's going to be six times the amount. There's going to be multiple vents. So we don't even have a study of the noise coming from this present facility. So it's going to be six times the amount.
So I think what she's saying is, there's no one at the facility right now. It's all quiet. Do you have a baseline now where there's, is it not quiet?
It's not quiet. Oh, no, absolutely not.
Four twenty-nine or four twenty-five?
Four twenty-nine.
Okay, so if we're just looking at four twenty-five-
Well, I'm just saying that that is loud. So we're going to have another facility that's going to be, there's six times the amount of vents. I don't know. That's my understanding. So I'm just wondering, what's the acoustic level of the present facility versus now we're going to have another facility with six times the amount of vents? It just-
Yeah, so I understand, I think for-
Is there an acoustic, actually, I guess my question is, is there an acoustic study on the present facility?
I don't know. Kathy, do we have anything? Or Bob, do we have any present day?
That would be helpful.
Not that I'm aware of, or if you do, it's not planned with you.
Would that take a month to get?
Yeah, well, we can't, yeah, the problem, so not the problem, but the, we're reviewing four twenty-five, so we can't really look at anything for four twenty-nine, unless there just happened to be something on file, which it doesn't sound like there is.
And as I can add, I think what kind of triggered the sound study was the fact that we're boarding a residential area where our other facility wasn't. So the distance from our existing facility to the residential areas was that much greater now that we are actually-
But the residential facility, we still hear that.
So it'd be interesting then to even get the baseline, and then you'd sort of know the impact of what's traveling in general.
Right, and that will be held to your standards of the maximum increase-
Right, right. The baseline.
Am I concerned about a baseline? If it's delayed, then as your trees fill in, they create sort of a buffer from the sound versus now. There are no trees, so there's no buffer between residential and there. I mean, you're going to, your buffer will start to increase in April and May, once the trees fill in. That's a natural buffer for the sound.
Right, but we are proceeding with it now. So hopefully, the month of February, we're not going to sprout too much vegetation.
Right, so you're going to have something baseline now during February when there's, okay.
My next question. Okay. Concrete facility. So temporary, six months, is that what?
A temporary structure and then-
Let's say it goes on for five, like how long can the zoning officer actually say, oh, another six months, another six months, another six months? How long can it, is there an end date? Can it go on forever?
Well, we could ask the building inspector, or could it be a condition of the board to come back before the board for an extension?
My question is, is there, like, could it go on for ten years? Could it just go on forever? Is there actually a stop date ending?
I think we talked about-
We could have a concrete facility in our backyard forever. Is there an end date?
Yeah, I think we talked about a possible condition on just having to come back after X amount of time, but without being, you can't just constantly renew till the end of time. So that's something we talked about last time as a, I think we said twelve months, we'd want to have them come back and reevaluate what's going on. I mean, the problem is-
I think that, I think originally, back when we were in the library, I think the applicant stated that it was about a twelve-month time, and there was that gentleman from the concrete plant that, you know, the sooner they're out, the better. And I think you did talk about that, Carrie, saying that there would be, you know, that you would put that in the site plan condition.
So we have six months, but you know it's going to be twelve, is that?
So, yeah, I don't think it'll be six, yeah.
It makes no sense.
So it sounded like, well, originally, I think we heard twelve to eighteen, and then it sounded like-
I just heard six months.
No, no.
Now, the zoning officer just said, you know, at my discretion, we'll extend it.
Right.
So it's going to go on and on and on. This is what has happened in the past with our town and the zoning officer and just letting things keep going and going and going, and the neighborhood suffers.
Right.
So I think what you could do is what he was saying is, a temporary structure is allowed for six months. After that, it's up to the discretion of the zoning enforcement officer. And if we as a board decide, after six months, it has to come back before the planning board, you can get an update, and then you could do that, where the planning board could make that six-month mark, whereas the applicant has to come before us and say, look, it, it's taking longer, or whatever. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is if the public feels uncomfortable with, you could have a joint approval process, the zoning enforcement officer plus the planning board. But that mark at where they need approval to continue forward is six months. It's not twelve months, it's not eighteen. He's already told you, according to our bylaws, it's six months. They need some approval to go forward after six months.
And then how do you not approve it? Like, they've already got all the time invested, everything out, but it's not, it won't happen? So I don't understand. It's not a six-month. It's actually, it's going to go on indefinitely. So that concrete plant is now a concrete plant indefinitely.
So, you know, part of the process that we're trying to do is we're trying to hire a consultant from the outside that can help us navigate something that we're not used to, that the town hasn't seen, that it's an operation that's already been disclosed as first in the country. We're not skilled in that. We're trying to have someone who's-
This is an endeavor that, it's not going to take six months to build it. So it makes no sense.
And I think we've been forward about that. We know it's longer than six months.
Right. Right, I think there's a sensitivity that, you know, this is a neighborhood, and that's a long period of disruption for the neighborhood, so I-
But the building of this whole thing is going to be a nuisance in the noise, and it's not six months, and that's why the bylaw is there. It's like to protect the neighborhood.
So that's something, yeah, okay, I don't, I see what you're saying, and I definitely think it's something that we can-
So I think what also you're saying is, if it's approved and it goes beyond the six months, you're already a quarter of it into the game. Like, you can't shut them down and say, you know, you can no longer, you know, and that's what it concerns of the neighbors are, which is already a neighborhood that's already-
So they don't meet the criteria, is the point. They don't meet the criteria. They need a concrete company to build it. It's not going to meet the six months. It just doesn't, it doesn't meet it.
Yeah.
Well, the only criteria they could have is if you guys don't do your concrete on-site, you just bring in the concrete trucks. It's the only other-
It doesn't meet the criteria. It just-
Well, we can, well, take a closer look at that, and I actually, where in this is temporary structure anyway? I wanted to take a quick-
Actually, the definitions, and it's actually twelve months. A structure without any foundation of footing is to be removed within a twelve-month time period. Said structure shall conform to the requirements of the schedule of the destiny and dimension requirements, and shall require a permit or certificate of zoning compliance from the building inspector. When that twelve months is up, there's nothing to say they can't reapply for another twelve-month period. Okay?
Or temporary. Temporary.
Another twelve months.
Like another company building on that side. It's another company coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah, the-
It's a concrete company. It's not them. It's not STERIS.
It's a temporary concrete company. The mixer is essentially a forty-foot trailer, a trailer with certain length stood up on end, and it creates concrete. So you don't have trucks rolling in and out to pour. When you're pouring that much concrete, you need to have a steady and constant reliable source of concrete.
I don't need to understand the process. I know, I like, it just doesn't make sense that we need another company.
Well, who else is going to pour? Who else is going to pour the concrete? Or manufacture the concrete?
If it's that large of an endeavor, it doesn't make sense.
What doesn't make sense?
To have it built behind a neighborhood.
Okay, why don't we just cut that there?
It is not meeting the criteria. It does not meet it.
So why, I see what you're saying.
Okay, so why don't we stop there? Because I think we do have that as part of our memorandum that wasn't addressed tonight, but we did have some questions about what we can do as it relates to the concrete plant. I think that's something what Michelle's saying, is we don't fully have that insight of what are, what are we able to restrict or regulate within the confines of the law and our bylaws. So I just don't think we have the information. I understand what you're saying. We've expressed that we don't want it to be a never-ending endeavor. It's obviously a huge disruption. So we need to figure out what we're allowed to regulate based on this being a concrete plant or temporary structure, all of that. We just need additional advisement on, so I'm just going to give him a chance to ask a question. Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your name and street. Yep, okay.
Is there any regulation for this temporary factory, whatever, temporary production of concrete twenty-four-seven? Do they work Monday, like, you know, weekdays from, like, regular business hours?
So Bob, you explained that before. Could you remind us, what is the, for a construction period, what are the, was it, we argued, not argued, we talked about this before. It was seven to seven, but not for the construction period?
Seven to seven, Monday through Saturday, no Sundays, or legal holidays, unless they request permission from me in writing, and I grant it, okay? I've only granted it once, on the Fourth of July, to work construction, and that was on Bartlett Street, where there wasn't a residence around.
Okay. So that's seven to seven, Monday through Saturday, no Sundays. Okay.
Or the big holidays.
Okay. Okay, you had a, okay.
Keep an eye on STERIS. If I could also just add, we don't plan on pouring concrete every day. So this is a big structure. It's going to take a lot of time to form it up, to get rebar in it, to prep it, and then there's going to be a long day or two of pours. And then we're going to be curing, and we're going to be putting forms up and expanding up to the next level. So it's not like that plan's going to be running seven to seven, six days a week.
And then when the concrete is in, then you X-ray the concrete to make sure it's quality, like there's no leaks or?
No, that's why we're producing it on-site, so we know what the quality assurance of the concrete is.
Oh, so you don't have to X-ray the concrete?
We don't have to X-ray it.
Oh, okay, misunderstood that. Okay. Yes.
Is there a, like, way to guarantee that the beams won't be facing the residential area?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Can they guarantee, STERIS guarantee, the beams will not face residential area inside their building?
So it sounded like, Anthony, you would ask that question if they knew which way the beams are facing. It didn't sound like that was anything as part of the-
Right, like, can we put it somewhere?
Well, I think the response was it's in the shield anyway, so that it would be irrelevant to direction. Is that, did I say that correctly? There's not really. So there's no, like, you know which way. So I don't think they have a layout or anything like that.
I think it's a fair question to ask, just to know.
Yeah, I think we have it as part of your question, your original question, the direction. I'm just going to make sure I get to people who haven't had a chance to, yes. That's, yeah.
Hi, June Shore, thirty-four, Poole Circle, Ron. I am the person that filed the appeal based on the Z B A ruling. And just as a reminder to the planning board, my property is within ninety feet of this property that we're talking about in four twenty-five Woodley Street. Just in case you weren't aware, but it wasn't clear in the site plan, this is valid from North Row G I S. Just one of the things, I just want to make sure that it's clear, and I'm not hearing unsubstantiated information, but based on this being in place, there is no activity regarding this site plan or expansion that can occur at this point, including this temporary concrete facility. Is that correct?
Until the court case is decided.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I've heard and I've seen activity there, maybe inside the building. I don't know what's going on. I've seen cars out there. I see, you know, people out there. I just want to make sure that it's clear that no activity is going to occur, including concrete or doing anything. And if there's going to be any noise studies that if they're going to be conducted within my property, that they'll notify me and I'll properly request my authority before they come into my property.
So that's two things then. Is there activity on-site just related to, not related to construction?
And we'll use it for a meeting every now and then from the existing facility. If we're busy over there, you may-
Well, it's your property, but you're not, you're not like pouring concrete, obviously. And if there is a noise study on anybody's property, do you notify, what's the process for? It's just your own property?
I would assume the acoustical engineer would do what he legally needs to do. We're not conducting a study, so I wouldn't be allowing notifying anybody or do not know that.
I think you could, if the board would provide my contact information, they could reach out to me directly. I would give them that permission, but I just would hate to see somebody trespassing on my property, and they'd have to take action.
Okay.
Regarding the safety and to the town and the neighborhood, as Millie mentioned, this is new technology, not done here in the United States. This is within a stone throw of a neighborhood. They can't say it's safe because they don't have any expertise or experience with the people that are physically here. They're relying on what they know from a facility overseas, where the regulations may be different. And we still haven't seen any of that information regarding the other sites that they talked about, that were going to be building in California and Illinois, about where those locations are and the proximity and all of that information. So I'm disappointed not that it's covered here. You know, again, there are safety concerns with the facility, not this facility, but in sterilization. Let's face it, this is, you know, new technology, just like ethylene oxide and gamma, which is done in this facility at four twenty-nine. There have been explosions and fires caused by these processes. We don't know what are the safety concerns for this process, because we don't know. We don't have any experience. And being so close to the neighborhood, it's a very big concern. And for them to say the impact to the environment doesn't impact property owners? There's no substantiation that says that. My property value, I think it's assumed would degrade and reduce based on having this facility in my backyard. There is statements in here about that, and you pointed them out already, about inconsistencies. They're saying that the X-ray system will not emit noise. Well, they have a noise study going on. So it's a contradiction of what's written in their statements and what data they're supporting behind it. The traffic volume, this is the sample size taken. I got a chance to look at this briefly this afternoon. I just thank you, Kathy, for sending me that thirteen-meg file. But the traffic, the sample size is not statistically significant. They took three days within sequential order in the middle of November. I don't know how that is statistically significant or representative of the population. Three out of three hundred sixty-five days. I'm not a statisticianist, but I could do the math. That doesn't add up to me. Sorry, it just doesn't cut the mustard here. And then also, they're talking about the noise and about traffic. You know, reality is different than what the assumption is that they're making put together about this traffic. There's going to be more vehicles, and we know reality is, is that they're going to have to reposition some of the trucks that are left outside in order to bring that equipment in to process it during the evening. They can't tell me they're not going to operate some kind of truck to move those vehicles around, even in the parking lot after seven P M. I think that's, I don't think that's true. Having, and then also, you know, the other key things that I think is also needed to be reminded, along with what was already mentioned about the concrete facility. This is a regulated industry. F D A does not get up and just make changes like that. There is an adoption process that this has to go through in order for companies to accept and use X-ray radiation as part of their sterilization process. They have to go through a lot of validation studies. They have to go through a lot of testing. It's very expensive. And unless there's some push for them to want to use this, then the revenue generation that they're thinking they're going to see might not be for several years, because nobody's going to use it. So the facility could be sitting idle with all of that equipment ready to go, but nobody's using it, because it hasn't been adopted by F D A or by those companies. You know, I agree with the decommissioning of the facility. You know, I don't know how you sell a piece of property with twelve-inch, you know, excuse me, twelve-feet-thick walls in the container. I don't know if you can use that for any gaming facility, but I'm sure the limited use that gets created limits the town in the future. And forbid anything ever happened, and STERIS decided to move it elsewhere. You're stuck with a dinosaur, and you can't move that dinosaur. I think the other, you know, again, the monitoring external radiation technology, who said it was available, but they didn't say they would do it. So I'm, you know, I just want to clarify that, if that was something that's going to be looked at as part of the peer review. And again, I, you know, based on these, the situation with the legal actions that we appealed, I feel these hearings are not helpful. We're support, and I don't see anything in writing from Town Legal that says that we can continue doing this. I have had an email stating, you know, verbal communication, but I don't have anything in writing. I don't have any precedent set. I don't have any legal action that says that we should continue these hearings. And I think that we're spinning up all this time and people's resources that should be done to other things to help the town. So I'm formally requesting legal, in writing from Legal, the town of North Row's legal department, giving the precedent of why these continuations of these hearings should continue based on this appeal not being resolved in court.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I think, just regarding that last one with counsel, I do, I think we got something from counsel.
I don't have it in front of me, Carrie, but it was an email from legal counsel.
It was, yeah, Kathy provided what came from counsel based on a conversation she had, that there was no substantiation, no legal precedent, no regulation that says we should continue. And until I can see that, I think we should see some dissent until the legal action is cleared up.
Okay, let's see. So we, the board, just so the board knows, we received an email from Kathy updating us on what town council said. But we don't have the exact wording from town council. So is that something the board would want to see, just what town council had to say in general about this? So we received an email. The appeal was filed. Kathy spoke with town council yesterday regarding on any impact on the current application. And the filing of appeal does not put a hold or stop on other boards from reviewing and issuing their decisions. We must proceed with the public hearing. When we issue our decision, it's based on the variance, it's based on the fact that variance was granted. If the variance is not sustained, the applicant will be required, be required to file an amended site plan application. Did we want a direct statement or?
Is there precedent for continuing a hearing?
I don't think we have that information.
It's not that, it's not unique to this situation. I mean, anytime an appeal is filed, it's very specific. It's, you know, it's an appeal of a particular, I mean, usually what we deal with. It's an appeal of a particular decision. And, you know, what I work with is the zoning board and the planning board. But if an applicant or a conservation commission, if an applicant is before other boards, it doesn't stop that process. it doesn't stop the, that process. I can't cite you what, you know, I mean, the attorney could cite you. I'm sure the applicant's attorney can cite you exactly what our attorney would say. I mean, it's, it's a standard, you know, it's not anything unique to this site. It's not anything unique to Northboro, is how the courts work in Massachusetts. That one, an appeal of one decision of one board does not stop an application or an applicant going before another board.
Madam Chair, if I may, it does prevent them from doing any work.
Absolutely.
Right, so that, that doesn't, why are we having any of these activities and conversations about something that may not happen and may take a while for it to be resolved? And we're utilizing resources staying here at what, eight thirty at night on things that could be discussed on other matters?
So we do actually have, hold on one quick second. We do have, as part of our memo, we have a couple of components that we've requested from town council. And one of them is surrounding the appeal. So I think that's something that we could further get clarification on, whether there's precedence, what their language is, what their reasoning is. And then, to your point, actually have that exact verbiage. And yes.
Thank you. Stephen Bedouse, the appeal of the variance that was granted stays the issuance of a building permit, right? For that, construction of that addition that requires the variance. So the variance is held by the court's office because of the appeal. So we can't record it, so we can't get a building permit to do that addition. It doesn't stay anything else. It doesn't stay activities on the site, use of the building. It stays the issuance of a building permit for the addition. That's it. We can proceed at our own risk for other permits, like we have with the conservation commission, groundwater advisory board, this board. But it's, we're waiting for, you know, we'll have our day in court on the appeal. And the outcome of that will dictate whether we have to file an amended site plan and amendments to those other boards. But the appeal to the land court stays the issuance of the building permit, building permit for the addition only. We can still use the property.
Madam Chair, I'm not saying they can't, I'm just saying to have these, to have these conversations about these other matters, groundwater, ZBA, planning board.
Right, you're saying what is it all matter?
We should continue. So that's, I'm asking and requesting respectfully.
Yeah, I think that's been, I think that's been one of our items here that we wanted just to get further clarification on. So thank you for bringing that up. That is certainly on our radar.
One last question, if I may. The peer review, have we selected somebody to be able to conduct that peer review?
No, tonight, the purpose of tonight was to see what information that we have and then determine who would the best resource be based on the types of questions that the board wants to further look into. So I don't know if we'll resolve that this evening, but that's the next step. Did you have something, Michelle?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could just answer a couple of his or respond to some of his questions that he commented on. I know that the board had asked about the two or three other locations that you were planning on opening new facilities in the United States. And have you determined that? I forget, Millie, weren't you asking those questions?
Yeah, Millie, you did ask.
Yeah, there were one in California and one in, I believe, Illinois, but I don't think that they've... I don't know if we're further along in the process than they are at this point. Do you know anything about those?
We're kind of in design and permitting in all three places right now.
Simultaneously, altogether? Okay. And so then that adds to the next question he said is this, so if you only have one facility and it's abroad and it's in Sweden, are there similar regulations that would be used within Massachusetts where he's talking about? There might be two different regulations, two different countries, two different governing boards?
Well, I think, to start off with, the X-ray technology is not new technology. The size of the machines that we're going to have are bigger than normal. But the X-ray technology is used in the United States and is regulated by, by the state and the federal government today. The size of what we're going to use is bigger than that.
Scale.
So that's where he was talking about the FDA approval on the size? Because, no?
FDA use of X-ray?
Processing of the actual process.
Okay, and that has not been approved by the, I'm trying to understand that whole discussion.
So, Mike Corelli with STERIS, so a particular process is validated by the manufacturer or the customer. So it's not on STERIS for us to validate this process. It's up to the customer to go through that validation process to say, okay, I use the process in gamma. I'm going to go to X-ray. In order to do that, I have to go through this testing to prove that following the completion of this process with X-ray, I have the same microbial reduction on the product to make it usable to the end user that I did with gamma. So the fact that it's, it's, the technology is being used, it isn't used in the United States. Yes, there has to be some sort of adoption process. STERIS is going to run testing and with those customers that choose to transfer to X-ray, electron beam, any other process that a customer goes to. So it is proven technology. It's being used in Europe. Europe typically is ahead of the United States in adoption of different things. And the plant in Switzerland has been operating since twenty-ten, so we have ten years of knowledge and experience. And, and any containment or, or act there, if there's concerns for that, we know that, that, that this site is contained and that the technology is, is working as designed.
So if STERIS takes this technology, right, and what you're saying is that they have to use it and then say it's the same, they get the same results from the old technology, and that's how they bring that to the FDA? How many years do they have to before the FDA would approve that?
No, so again, that's, that's, that's not an inquiry. That's with the customer, with their five, ten Ks of process to prove out that process. But it's, it's, it's a process like any other thing. It, it, it can be a month-long project for them. So they would continue processing however they typically are right now. And while they're doing that, they're going to use our technology and start proving this technology out so that then they can transition into this technology that they not proved out yet. So, so that, that's, that's another area that is of concern for the customer, but ultimately, it's, it's, it's not a concern for STERIS.
Yeah. Yes.
Just to clarify my point, I did not say that it's not used here. I just said it's not at this, this site size, right? Just to make sure I'm not, my words are being heard clearly. This, this magnitude of X-ray technology is not used here in the United States at all.
Scale.
Right, and, and to your, to your question, there's testing that has to be done by like a Boston Scientific or Holologic or any of the companies that have these metal devices. There's a process they have to go through and determine that the product has been sterilized appropriately. There's like a bug micro level of testing that they have to show to be able to demonstrate compliance. And you don't want something to be brought into a hospital room and get sick, get infection because the product wasn't sterilized and wasn't cleaned properly. So that's the whole process they have to go through. Some of those things could take three, it could take three months, it could take six months. Based on FDA process, there, there is no timeline that can be guaranteed. It could take up to ninety days without any answer. So it all depends on how much time it takes. Plus, all the time it takes to work with STERIS or someone like STERIS to do all the testing, put all the validation together, run enough samples to produce, to be able to test. So it's not a, just a simple, tomorrow we're going to start X-ray sterilization. It takes some time. So it's not going to happen overnight.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you. Other ques, yes?
I think that's kind of quick, but as a layperson.
Just, sorry.
You know, I heard the radioactive radiation, sometimes a prefix of non and all that. So I'm wondering, for the people who work there, what are they wearing when they go to work? Are they wearing, are they just like I am when they go to work or when they are doing their job? Or are they wearing hazmat suits? And so, and the follow-up to the, well, I'll, I'll.
Okay, that's a good question.
Wonder what level of.
Yeah, I'm not sure we talked about that ever, is it?
To the gentleman.
Yeah.
Just tell you, just tell you, that's a little bit. There's nothing specialist like any of the.
Okay, so even if you're operating in the belly of the beast, so to speak, it doesn't really.
In the shield?
In the shield. I don't know if you're in the shield or not.
You don't go in the shield.
No, okay. So there's no exposure?
The products conveyed into, through, through the chair.
Sure.
Products conveyed into the shield area to be processed and then comes out. So it's a conveyor system that brings it over to.
Did you have a follow-up based on that answer?
No, well, it was really if they're wearing something like a hazmat suit.
What was it?
Hazmat suits, you know, what, then what do you do with it? As a neighbor, I'm wondering, what's my exposure? I'm not in the building. And so the people that I would, the canary in the coal mine here is, are the employees. And I'm wondering if something happened to them, you know, what level of risk do they?
So it sounds like that.
So, so through the chair, very seriously, we don't, we wouldn't consider our employees the canary in the.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So just, just so it's understood, the, the concern over the twelve-foot thick walls is that's, should be, that's the safety net. That's the safety. That's what's making everybody safe and what's making this site safe. So just to, to, to give you an analogy, a very different type of analogy. Back, you know, today you go to the dentist, you get an X-ray in your office or whatever.
Yeah.
But years ago, I think you remember, you used to go to the dentist, put on the lead shield, lead vest. They take you, the person would leave the room, you're in there, they're X-raying you.
Saying why are you there?
So, but, but the twelve-foot thick walls are that lead vest.
Yeah.
So the lead vest made you safe. The twelve-foot thick walls are making everybody safe. That, that's, that's what is needed to contain the rays and it will contain rays. And that's what makes it safe for, I've, I've worked for STERIS for twenty-two years. I've worked in a gamma radiation site for twenty-two years. My health and safety department at a gamma radiation site, the largest safety concern for us is four-foot. Again, it's contained, there are safety measures, it is state regulated, it is a very serious business for us. STERIS has been isometics for us, was the founder. They've been in business since nineteen seventy-two and we have never had a problem with it.
I mean, I do remember pulling onto my street once with people in hazmat suits because of the leak at isometics. People at isometics. So I can't help, I can't unsee that, I guess was the phrase.
So, so, so I'll, I'll say that that was no reaction, that, that there was never released that happened at that time either.
Okay, other questions?
Can I ask about safety? We're talking about safety, security, right? We have a, we have a facility right now, four twenty-nine Whitney, that has gamma, has radiation, has ethylene oxide. Both are very dangerous. And, and it, you know, not saying we have, you know, suspects floating around right now, but there's nothing counterterrorism or somebody doing something, you know, devastating. There's nothing, you know, what kind of security do we have in place to prevent something like this from happening? And I don't know if that's part of the site review, but I'd like to see if that could be added as well.
So not for four twenty-nine, but for four twenty-five, did we ever talk about safety? Was there anything they would, can people get in?
It's four thirty-five.
I'm sorry.
So, so our, so our address, existing facility that we're not discussing is four thirty-five.
I'm sorry, I keep saying four twenty-nine. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yep.
Four twenty-five, there, there is, there is nothing to scale its electricity. So they, if they, they can't take it out of the cell because it's a huge piece of equipment that once they remove, it's no longer connected to, to the electric lines and it's nothing. Four thirty-five, again, safety, security, we take everything. So we do have security, of course.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Lisa Muselli, I want to begin about the sound within the trucks. Are they going to be backing up? Since they're going to be, I think a twenty-four-seven facility once it's up, right? So do they have trucks that back up with a beep beep sound or if they quiet back up? I mean, how does that work? Because in the middle of the night, I get awakened by a car coming by and doing that.
So I think we asked this before and we can't regulate that something like a back, like a beep sound of a back. And I forget that why that was. Is that just something? That's state law. Oh, federal. Oh, federal law. So we weren't able to regulate that component. But, so it exists, if that's your question?
It exists. Does it, does it get brought into the sound testing to see what the sound levels are going to change in that area? Which again, is a consideration for the neighborhood because even though it's an industrial commercial area, the sound travels and it's that pretty loud sound for that. Could they, and if they do that and find out that there is significant sound in the air, with a simple reading, that they could then maybe do something where the trucks come in and just come in and go out, just go back in?
I know it's not in your pervy, the logistics review. Do you have any insight into whether they look at that or don't look at that or? If you don't, that's okay.
Because it's a federally regulated thing, I do not believe they're allowed to incorporate that noise into a background. So that would be taken out of any background study because it cannot be changed.
Mitigating.
But it is our intention to only ship Monday to Friday. So we're not anticipating any trucks arriving or leaving the site on the weekends.
And you said seven to seven too, right?
Seven to seven.
Inside twenty-four hours, but the trucks outside were seven to seven.
Seven to.
Seven to seven, there'll be no trucks moving around the parking lot after seven P.M. Is that what I'm hearing?
Is that correct, Bob? Is that?
Well, that's what they wrote in the application.
Seven to seven is for construction activities.
I know, but I think in your application, didn't you write seven to seven?
Yeah, our normal operating hours for shipping ourselves.
It's in this book.
Just wanted to make sure I'm understanding that. So after seven P.M., I should hear the beep 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 in the parking lot.
I can't guarantee there'll never be a truck, but we're not going to be moving trucks at midnight, one o'clock in the morning. If we move the truck at nine, that's a convenience so that we can run over the weekend and it might happen. We're shipping, we're having over-road drivers seven to seven, Monday to, or Monday to Friday.
Okay. And did you have a question still? I want to make sure I get back to you.
Can you identify yourself again, please?
Yes, of course.
I caught him by surprise.
Sorry, sorry. Has there been any, there aren't many facilities like this, obviously. Has there been any studies around the background EMR and whether it impacts? We have houses very close to this facility. Does it impact any other radio frequency? Your wireless, your, your mobile phone, your, your cellphone or any of that? I realize it's low-level EMR, but nonetheless, are your radio reception impact your television? Impacted any of that?
That's a good question. Do you happen to know that? I don't think we asked that.
You'd have to, you'd have to refer to our radiation experts more for that.
That could be added to the peer review.
Yeah. I, can I ask a question about this too?
Yeah, concrete, it's sort of leading back to the lead shield. Is there something that's special about the composition of the concrete that we should know about? That, that a formulation or ingredients, is there lead?
It's, there is all that in it. It's a typical concrete. It's a higher density. The anger gets a little bit more, a little bit heavier to provide more, more shielding. But it is your typical stone, sand and cement concrete mix.
So how can you pour that and have no, you know, air pocket? I don't know, maybe I'm just not familiar with how it works, but are there ever air pockets? How do you make sure it's completely closed?
It's poured in, in, in layers. And there's precautions to make sure that there's no clear joints or flat joints. Everything is a rough joint, so there's no potential to get a straight shot through. But the same way any other concrete's put in, it vibrated in, it's vibrated against the, against the forms. And made sure that it's, bleed doesn't fill it up. You can't pour eight feet at once. It's, it's a long process to get it up there, so.
Okay, but how do you actually see, once it's poured, you can't see inside of it? That's why I was wondering, like, how do you?
You see it as it goes up, though. You're only pouring eight, ten yards at a time, so.
Okay, so there is, so when a shield inspection is done, what do they look at? Just the outside? How do they know what's inside is all?
Through the construction process.
Okay, so that's where the quality is determined. There's no, okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? I'm going to try to wrap this piece up. Okay, thank you for all of those comments. Those are great. I have a lot of notes here. So does the board have any other questions coming out of?
No.
Okay. Anything of staff, any additional? Okay, so in terms of the peer review, Kathy, what is the best way to go from here in terms of we have this information? Do we, how do we best decide the right peer reviewer or what?
Well, first what I, first I need to know what you want to have the peer reviewer review. Is it, you know, the entire application, you know, which is? Is it, you know, the entire application, um, you know, which is completely, um, that's sort of standard? So, uh, is it, you know, do you want them to look at, um, the site plan itself? Do you want them to just look at, you know, the additional information that you, you know, required, that you asked per your memo, and that's reflected in this document tonight? And then, so once we determine what it is that you want reviewed, then I would do research on finding, you know, consultants. We don't just look for one, what we've done peer review before, we don't just look for one, you know, we, we typically look for, you know, at least two or three. The, and, and in this particular case, um, you know, we, because there are so many, you know, you're looking at transportation, you're looking at acoustics, you know, you're looking at the actual technology, um, you know, we may be able to find one company that does all that, a very comprehensive company, you know, large engineering firm, or, or it, it may be that, um, when I, when I put the request out there for people to respond, that, um, you know, that if a firm is interested and they don't have the expertise for one of these components, they would then, you know, subcontract that out.
Okay, any thoughts from the board on that, what, in terms of what we're looking for?
Well, I think it, I would think that you'd want to look at the entire, um, application, for the things, to catch the things that we don't know about, would be my first guess.
Okay, any additional thoughts, Millie?
No, I agree with Anthony on that, more comprehensive.
Yep, and that would include all the questions we have, because they're in the book, right? But we could add in the question, like you asked, if the x-ray would somehow interfere with the electronics of the neighborhood?
Yeah, so I was thinking, application, site plan, which would include the traffic report, he's got to review the acoustics report, this E M R frequency, to be reviewing that. I'm, I'm wondering if the board wants to have the applicant look into the temporary concrete plant, and, um, that seems to be a big focus here, that we have a lot of discussion about that. I guess, I sort of struggle with this, and I don't, I don't know if, um, if you'd want to have the peer look at the use, although, I guess it's because there's a lot of questions about that, it's the first in the United States, right? So how do, and that might be very difficult to figure out, how do you find a peer who could actually review that? Because then maybe they would reviewing it from, you have a parent company that's using this in Sweden, right, or you're?
Yeah, that, that's, um, yeah, so there, there would be people out there that would just want to see the cops, some, kind of substitute x-ray, and what would need to be, um, the shield, so.
Right, so I'm wondering if that should be, since it's one of the first, and that was a question by many people. So.
What, what procedure?
Yeah.
So, like, next time we're discussing it, we're going to discuss it, uh, will we write the public through a hearing?
Yes, yes, it's a public, everything is a public, yep, this is all part of the public hearing. We just keep continuing, because there's a lot of information to go through, and we haven't been able to, we've been waiting for information, or needed additional, so you're always invited to participate.
Stephen Madhouse, and I, I say at every meeting, just to remind the board, we get the site plan reviewed. The board doesn't regulate the use of your site plan review, we'd be happy to talk about the use to allow you to fear the neighbors. So I hope we answered your questions, I, I would hope you don't try to condition the use through site plan.
No, I think we specified in response to that, that what we're looking at, to make sure this meets all the performance standards of that use, and as part of that, you've submitted information to support that, and we would like to have a peer review to make sure that that actually is.
Site plan, you're usually not inside the building, right, I mean, if you had any other.
But if you, what you're doing inside the building, if it leaks, then that's a problem outside of the building, but we want to make sure it's not going to leak, because then it's a problem.
That's fine, but there's a lot of discussion about the activities, you know, how the use is conducted and all of that, that's not inside, that's not site planned.
Well, for us to understand whether it's going to leak and what's going to leak, we need to know what's inside, and how it's being protected from getting outside, so that's sort of the conundrum. I get what you're saying, for sure, but I would just want to make sure, we kind of need A to get to B, so it's a little bit of a, if, if.
Yeah, I just remind.
I would remind back that we are obligated.
So what I have for, um, to, to put together a, a request for a peer review is, um, you want the, um, the review of the application, including the site plan, the review, the response to the planning board memo, and then, and then incorporate into that response is all of the studies, and then, including the acoustic study to come.
Yeah.
Michelle mentioned the concrete plant.
So for that, we had, um, sorry, that was your bullet, go ahead, the concrete, you had the concrete plant.
I, I mean, I, I'm, 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 I'm not assuming this, it's, the concrete plant is part of their application.
Right.
Their application references that, that there's going to be a temporary concrete plant for a twelve-month period, and then your, um, uh, list of questions includes questions about the process for the, for the concrete plant. So that's all include, you know, you don't, you, you don't have to, um, you don't have to list out every, I mean, everything's included in this application, that, that's what I'm gathering, is that, and that makes sense to me, is that's what you want reviewed. You want soup, soup to nuts reviewed, um, you don't just want the acoustic plan, you don't just want the lighting plan, it, it's everything that's been provided to you.
It sounds like that, it sounds like that across the board.
There's nothing, I mean, there's nothing you would exclude, the metric, the photometric you would exclude from, peer review, like, you find that necessary, everything?
Um, well, I don't know, does it make sense to, like, go through bits and pieces, or is it just part, like, are they going to just look at this in its entirety as a plan, or, we don't know?
Well, um, well, again, it all, it all depends on what you're asking for, but like, it's part of the, it's part of the site plan, you know, the, the photometrics are part of the site plan.
Right, so we.
So I don't, I mean, you, you, the, the, if you want the site plan reviewed, I suppose you can pick and choose which pages of the site plan, that, you know, you don't want landscaping reviewed, you know, you're, you're, you're good with us doing that in-house, you're good with us doing lighting in-house, I mean, all the standard site plan, um, factors that we look at. And so if that's the case, then you don't really need the site plan at all as part of the, the peer review, you know, that's something that, that we do in-house. But instead, the, the, the review would focus on the actual application, what is it that's, that, again, the use isn't allowed to use per our table, but, um, you know, looking at the application and the, and the additional information that was provided.
Right, if I could just say something, so on site plan, I think it should all be included for the photometric, I get it, and I deal with this all the time in design review, they look at it, they're like, yep, meets the criteria. It's like a one-minute conversation, right, I just don't see it as a big deal, I think you have to make it all part of the package, so we don't take pieces out of the site plan. Right, I just don't think it's a long, I don't, I don't see a peer focusing on a photometric, I mean, if, if, you're either, your lights are on your property, or they're off. Right, they're not spilling off the property, they're on the property, and that answers that question, check, you're done, on to the next thing.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, so it, it sounds like it would be the entire piece, and then additionally, we had components that we wanted council advising on.
Uh, yep, I have, um, um, I thought I read a flag, but basically, you're requesting, um, at least from tonight, you're requesting something from town council in writing regarding, um, the process of, just how the appeal process works.
Yes.
And does that, you know, put a stop to, um, you know, an application proceeding with, with another board?
Yep.
So other questions, Carrie, your, we had in the, in the memo, that's what you're referring to?
Correct, and that had a lot to do with the concrete plant. And then I guess I'd want to know, so we don't have in our bylaws, like, an outline of what, the, the procedure and process for a temporary structure, we just have a definition. So would we otherwise go by the state, how the state mandates?
It's usually the state, or it could be, um, the manufacturer's instructions. Okay, this particular plant, okay, like I said, it's typically on a trail, okay, and, you know, it's set up and taken down and moved all over the place. You know, with that comes a book of instructions, you know, I haven't seen the actual unit, so, you know, I, when they set it up, I was like, oh, sure, make sure they follow all the instructions.
Okay.
And it's, it's setting up a giant erector set.
And all of the, um, facilities that we've been building up on Bartlett Street, have any of those, um, those have all been, they've been bringing the concrete there, not building it on-site, right?
The only, the only poured concrete on those warehouses up on Bartlett Street is for the foundations. All of those walls are panels that are built in Pennsylvania and trucked up overnight.
Okay, all right, so you've, um, the town has never had a temporary concrete plant here?
No, but I had one in Grafton, I built the fire station.
Yeah, okay, so when you built the fire station in Grafton, you did that with the use of a temporary concrete plant?
And the rules that governed it were rules for temporary structure, I don't remember.
Uh, the planning board in Grafton, they didn't get that deep into it, they weren't that worried about it.
So it's your lucky day.
Very lucky day, um, the, the, the fire station required, I was in the building, required an exorbitant amount of concrete, they had winter conditions they had to fight with. So calling trucks in and getting things poured in cold, cold temperatures was very difficult, so they had a plant on-site. It was there for three or four, okay, six months, it was used for about a month of it, okay, not every day. But, you know, it's relatively quiet, um, it certainly falls within the sound of a standard bulldozer or excavator or something like that. You know, in terms of it, somebody bringing it in and setting it up, that's what these companies do.
Yeah, okay, I'm just curious to know if there are, if we don't have specific bylaws that define how temporary structures are regulated, what is that set of rules? Is there a default set of rules, does the state have a set of rules, like, where can I see how it's, I don't know if you know the answer, it's okay if you don't, I'm just wondering.
I think it's a dreadful call, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so maybe that's something that I would like, be interested in from town council, like, what regulates temporary structures? If we don't, I mean, I don't know if we know the answer.
Maybe part of your request for third-party.
Yeah, maybe that's.
You can have somebody reach out to a concrete plant and get their specifications.
Okay, that's a good idea, too. Okay, so does that give you, so Kathy, in terms of timing, is that, how should we then proceed with the next hearing, that sounds like?
Well, I, I'll, I'll give you, um, the, an example, one of the only other terms we've used peer review, because we typically handle it in-house. So I think, um, in my career, and Fred's, Fred's career here, the only time we've used peer review was when Avalon and Northbrook Crossing was being built. And actually, it wasn't even for Avalon, it was Northbrook Crossing, and, um, so what, what we did there was, um, the, um, the, the, the town in general, want, you know, I mean, as far as the board selectmen, the planning board, Z B A, everybody wanted, you know, peer review, because it was just such a, a large scale, we'd never had something like that before. So we just, um, basically went out to, you know, to bid for, um, you know, we need you to review the, um, the submittal, and then we also need you to do, um, to oversee the construction. And, um, and so we, you know, we didn't go back to the planning board, it didn't go back to the board of selectmen, it, you know, staff sent out the request for peer review, and, um, and we started peer review.
Kathy, I thought along the way, um, that we did a peer review maybe on a cell tower, didn't we do it somewhere along the way? And I actually thought that it was either one or two board members interviewed with the peer, I just remember doing this with Rick Leaf, I cannot remember what the applicant was, but I remember we interviewed a peer, whether it was Stop and Shop, or was it the cell tower, I just remember it happening.
We had, um, I don't think we did peer review for Stop and Shop. We hired a consultant to work on the, um, to work, oh god, that does go back, um, to work on the cell tower bylaw, but I don't, I don't know if it was in conjunction with a particular site or not, um, I can go back and, and look through the, I mean, there's not that many cell towers, so I can go back and look through those files, Michelle, and see what, what that was.
I've been on the board too long, I just remember half of them before, but I think.
Well, and I'm drawing a blank, too.
The original STARS had a peer review, yeah, at four thirty-five, because I read it, the camp dresser, yeah.
That probably either predates me, or the board that I wasn't working with at the time, so I don't, I wasn't involved in a peer review with, with STARS, or Isomatics, so. So that's, again, that, that's how we did it when, when we were reviewing Northbrook Crossing. If, um, if you want me to, you know, put together, um, what, it's not really a request for proposal, but I mean, I'm going to call it that, because that's typically what we do, so it would be like a mini request for proposals, um, if you want me to put that together, and you want to look at it, and approve it before it's sent out, I mean, that's your prerogative, um, I mean, if you, if you want to, you know, interview the consultants, as opposed to staff choosing the consultants, that's, you know, that's, I suppose that's your prerogative.
Maybe collabor, maybe a collaborative effort.
We, you know, it's just, it's in our bylaw, it's just, it's just not, it's just not that specific, so, I mean, if that's, you know, I mean, that, if, if we want to do that, that, I mean, if you want to do that, that's, that seems, you know, legitimate to me. The, um, we then, what, what then happens is, is, um, you know, we get obviously cost proposals also, and, um, then the, um, the applicant then is able to weigh in on, um, you know, is, is the cost, you know, like, um, does it seem legitimate, or does it seem, you know, exorbitant? And then they, the applicant also weighs in on who is selected, and if they don't agree with who is selected, then they, um.
Well, I think there's only two reasons they can appeal, and one is not cost, oh, there's only two reasons, and I forget what they are now, but I don't think it's a cost.
We, we have it written right in our, in our, in our bylaw, that, um, that the applicant's able to appeal the consultant, um, selection to the board of select, and the grounds for appeal is limited to claims that the selected consultant has a conflict of interest, or does not possess the minimum requiring qualifications.
Okay, so it's not cost-related, those are the only two.
No, no, it's not cost-related, but, um, but it's, it's something that we take into account.
Of course, right, of course.
You know, as, as far as the, the, the cost. And sometimes if you get really weird swings, you know, you have three people reply, and, and they're not sort of, you know, all kind of approximately around the same, and you've got one that's such a low ball, and one's a high ball, you know, you, you most likely would go out again.
Okay, so it, what is the timeline, from the time it takes to put together the R F Ps for the planning board to take a look, and then move to the next process? What, so when do we, when should we look to come back?
Obviously, because you can't deliberate outside a meeting, um, and if you want to look at the R F P, then I would have it for you for your next meeting.
Okay.
I've also.
Does that sound okay?
I've also got to get those decisions to you, um, from the last meeting, so that you can sign those at the next, um, uh, board meeting. So, um, so that's what, you know, we could add that on to the, you know, first of all, you, you, I'm assuming you're going to continue this hearing, so you need to continue this hearing, to a, a specific date and time, and, um, and then, you know, you can add the, um, review of, of the request for proposals at your next meeting.
Okay, do, in terms of looking at the R F Ps, do we need to continue the hearing to that date, or is that, does that need to be part of the hearing?
Yeah, while you're talking about this project, you need, oh, I'm sorry, I mean, um.
If we're just looking at the R F Ps, do we do that, that's still part of the hearing?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would consider that to be part of the hearing.
Okay, so the options are, um, well, March third, we have our hearings for the bylaw, actually, March, oh, February eighteenth, that's right, we still have February eighteenth.
Right, so, so far, February, on February eighteenth's agenda is you have, um, the public hearing for zero Bartlett Street, that you haven't heard that yet, but you have that, you have their application, that was continued, um, and, uh, so that's, um, you know, that's, that's brand new for your eighteen agenda. And then you have the master plan.
Yep.
So that's, um, and then I'm assuming you would continue this hearing to that date, but. Otherwise, on the, on the third, on March third, you have three hearings already scheduled, three new hearings that night, um, you have the. Um, you have the zoning amendments, um, you have four hundred Cedar Hill Street, um, and two twenty-two West Main Street. And those are new hearings for, for the third.
Okay, so in terms of the options, does that, what works for, does February eighteenth, March third, March seventeenth for the next three meetings?
I think if you're just reviewing the RFPs, do we even, I know it'll be on the agenda, but do we need to show for that discussion?
I think that's up to you.
I mean, yeah, it's up to you.
I think we would leave that up to you since it's your scope and what you want to do.
You're more than welcome to come, but we, I don't think, does anybody feel like you'd have?
No.
So it's up to you.
I think we may have somebody local here, but we won't.
Yeah, you don't have to. So then does it matter in terms of date?
Whatever the work spread, the quickest thing you guys could do, I guess.
So February eighteenth?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we will plan to look at the RFP right up to get that approved and figure out next steps. So I need a motion to continue the hearing to February eighteenth at, should we just make it seven o'clock? I'm sure Bartlett's also seven o'clock.
Bartlett is at seven o'clock.
Okay, so we can make them both seven o'clock. Why don't we do, my, my preference is possibly make them both seven because in case anybody continues, we don't have to wait till, wait our time. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay, is there a motion to continue the hearing for four twenty-five Whitney Street, special permit site plan approval and special permit per groundwater protection overlay district to February eighteenth at seven PM? So moved. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, hearing continued to February eighteenth. Thank you, everybody. Okay, next, we have consideration of minutes from December third. So did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from December third?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, were there any amendments or anything submitted for amendments or?
No, I, nobody submitted anything to me.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes for December third? Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the December third minutes.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, minutes from December third are approved. Okay, next, um.
And, and I'm sorry, I wasn't watching, and just in, in case, um, um, the new board secretary didn't catch it, who made the motion?
I made the motion. Amy seconded it.
Okay.
Um, okay, so master plan, it, our current plan is I think the master plan steering committee was able to meet this week. And we'll have some feedback that it's, we've invited anybody to send written comments to the planning board for our February eighteenth meeting where we will hopefully finalize everything then. Um, does that still sound like the right plan? Anything that you'd add to that?
Nope.
Okay, so in terms of, um, Kathy, I know you and I briefly talked about a deadline for the comments. That weekend is a long weekend with President's Day on that Monday, so. Is it President's Day? I think it is.
Yeah, I, I just didn't, we're usually on those Monday holidays, but.
So just in terms of like, I just wanna make sure everybody has enough time. If we get a lot of comments, that we get a chance to read them. So I don't know if we could, I know we talked about maybe putting in the agenda a deadline for people so they knew when it was. Um, I'm thinking maybe earlier than the fourteenth, in that case of the long weekend.
Right, so what, so as far as out of the, the master, just so that you are all aware, out of the master plan steering committee last night, so I'm preparing a memo.
Okay.
You know, from their meeting that will go to you. Um, so, um, um, so I'm gonna draft it, send it back out, and, um, and then, and then get it back. I was looking at the fourteenth, that, that you, you would have it by the fourteenth?
Um, let's see, how about just the thirteenth to put that extra day in? Is that possible?
Mm-hmm.
Just in case anybody does a long weekend.
What day?
February thirteenth. So if all comments, you don't have to be here on the thirteenth. It's just all comments would be in our inbox so that we have a chance to review it before the eighteenth. So that would be whether it's from master plan or any members of the public, and we'd be able to take a look at any sort of written comments. Okay, um, I, anything else on master plan? Good? Okay, great. So that is our next step. Thank you.
Can I, can I just, um, so can I make a comment? We have a letter here from somebody about, um, referencing master plan, taking into consideration. Can I just, um, explain to the, just 'cause I've been on the board, just take two seconds. I've been on the board a long time, so I know the history of inclusionary's, um, bylaw, okay? On the inclusion, what happened was, is they started to see developments. We, we spent so much time on this, didn't we? On the inclusionary zoning bylaw, so that if somebody came in, and we figured like a threat, if somebody came in and built six units, we would say if you build over five, one has to be affordable. You know, we even had discussions, if you build over four, one has to be affordable. So we went through this whole metric system figuring out. And I remember that we had an applicant come before us who wanted to do, um, you know, some units, and Amy said, could you make one of them affordable? And by right, we, we can't ask. We, we don't have an inclusionary zoning bylaw, right?
We, we used to have one.
We used to, but it got voted off. So moving forward, thinking about the master plan, thinking about twenty years out, if you have anybody who does any type of, I'm not even talking about density, I'm talking about anywhere, that there's any multiple units, you can't ask for anything affordable in that because it's not in your zoning bylaw. So, um, and then the other thing is, when I was just reading through this, I was taken back where the person who wrote it said, well, that's used more for high-density, inner-city things. I'll tell you, I'm going through a process now where I just put someone in a neighboring community into these over fifty-five small cottage units, right, where the developer from that town in a neighboring community, they have an inclusion, they said, if you're gonna do that, you have to make so many of these affordable for seniors. And what they said was, you either have to give the money to the town or build them for the seniors, right? It was an option given to the developer, and that's up to the prerogative of the board, whether we wanna decide, do, do you get the money to the town or, or, and the town does something, or do you build it? But without that, you have nothing, right? So I understand, I think there's, um, I read through this, and I think you wanna really read through this letter and then think about it. Think about twenty years out. The building is gonna happen in Northborough. You're going to get units that are more than just one building at a time. How do you bring any affordability component into it? How do you take care of your affordable housing through that? You have nothing right now.
Okay, that's, I didn't actually have a chance to read the letter because we had so many other things to prepare for tonight, but I will. Did everyone, did anyone have a chance to read it?
I just started.
Okay, Amy, did you have a chance?
No, I didn't read it yet.
Okay, so keep that in mind.
Read it, but I think, having bid, I think it's worthwhile for Kathy to pull up the bylaw and to read about it and know the history because the reason we did it before was we saw the building starting to happen, and we got units out of it. Now, if something happens, we have nothing.
Okay.
Because we don't even have a true mitigation type of bylaw that we can ask for it. Do you know what I mean? It's not, so, just something to think about.
Of course, I saw, I hear what you're saying.
Everything, think about that.
Okay, so keep that in mind when you get a chance to look at the letter. And then these are obviously things we can discuss, um, at our next, on the eighteenth. Okay, the, um, quickly, I, I had sent a, um, information about the D L T A grant from C M R P C, so that's what's printed here, um, a little bit. About, just to give you more information about this grant, but then additionally, I wanted to give everybody, and I know it's late, so we don't have to talk too much about it.
Did David give us a time tonight?
Yes.
Are we gonna be shut down in ten minutes?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, oh my god, we got seven minutes to go.
Are we really shut down at nine thirty? Okay, well, let's try to hit that then. So, um, what I just wanted to share with everyone, too, um, so maybe it is a good thing to do would be to take a look at what the D L T A grant is all about, because there's a, an opportunity, when I went to the last, um, board meeting, um, I learned that there's, like, there's two hundred ninety thousand dollars that have been committed to this grant, and they're going through all these different applications, and there's an opportunity for us to apply in March for these different types of grants. If this isn't the right grant for us, I still think there's value in understanding the grant opportunities available to us because whenever we can leverage a grant, I think it saves the taxpayers money. So I don't wanna discount, um, any option on the table. So these are actually the grants that were given as part of the January, um, distributions. Oh, shoot, I did, I thought I printed enough. Wait a minute, you can have mine. Um, let's see. No, I don't need it. Oh, I did print extra. Yeah, you can pass that down to Kathy.
Was that part of the error? Did you know, um, the whole eleven pages carried?
No, this was right in the newsletter, and you can have a copy. I did have an extra copy. Um, so just to give you an idea of some of the grants that have come so far, and one of the first things that they, that, um, the executive director had said to me when I went to the last board meeting was, um, you know, let me know as you finalize this master plan if, you know, there's any, if you need any help with getting grants off the ground for implementation. I think Amy, does Amy have one? Okay. So I also just wanted to share with everybody the types of resources and opportunities available to us. Um, so you don't have to look at that now, but there's all different kinds of grants that we can consider and look at. The one most timely is the D L T A grant, which is why I wanted everyone to take a look, and there's another copy. Um. And maybe at one point it would be of value to have someone like Trish Saddles come in and talk to us about the different grant opportunities available and where we could actually utilize these services. I mean, even with the D L T A, if you have a chance to read it, they'll actually help us write this application. The, there's no, the, whether or not there's a cash, uh, local cash match. C M R P C actually provides it in the case of D L T A, so they provide the cash match. Um, obviously, if you're granted the funds, you would work, we'd work with C M R P C. Um, so I think if everyone has a chance to take a look at this, um, you know, before the next time we meet, and also the different opportunities and resources, um, that might be helpful because I, you know, I wanna make sure everyone has the same perspect, not perspective, the same, um, access to information that I get when I go to these meetings, and so I wanted to share that with you all. I also have, um, a ton of different things that have been, so every week, every, I'm sorry, every month I get this report of what all the other towns are doing, and for a lot of these towns, the way they're making their things work are through like, you know, downtown strategic plan grants or economic development grants or, um, all sorts of different grants. There's, um, senior housing-type grants. So I can, uh, these are a pain to print because they're on paper that I don't have at home, but, um, just even as simple as discussing senior housing or, um, economic development, discussion about D T L A. So there's all sorts of resources that other towns are taking advantage of. And when I see this list come out, when I don't see us on it, it makes me wonder, you know, how can we better insert ourselves into this type of process? So that's just for a board consideration. I don't know if there's any comments or questions to start.
One, one of the best ways, in my opinion, one of the best ways to do, to use a district financing is when, um, when I talk to the state about, um, financing or grants for our, for our downtown settings. And, um, so because each grant is so small, you know, we're gonna have to put, you know, more than one, one program together. And so the downtown initiative, which is, you know, you had all talked about that just very briefly, and I think that it was back in probably December or January.
Yep.
And, um, so when I spoke to the state, um, they, you know, they, they advised that, that we were too, too early in our, in our master plan process. And that once the implementation committee got set up and said, yes, you know, downtown is the, I'm hoping like what they say, that yes, downtown is the first thing that, that, you know, we should pursue as a town. So there's, I mean, there's lots of pockets of money, and so what, what is, um, what could essentially happen is, is that you get some of the district, you know, financing from regional planning commission. You piggyback that with downtown initiative money.
Yep.
Um, and there, and depending on the scope of the project, there's, there could possibly even be some money from, um, an agency that's called Mass Development.
All right.
So, so you put that all together, and then whether there's, you know, some initial seed money, too, that might be available from the town. Um, so, you know, so, so there's, there's ways to, you know, make it all work together.
Yeah, that's great. That's good to know.
And I think we've used, um, through the town administrator's office, I think we've used the, the district financing, um, when, um, and I, and I know it's late, but there's, there's this whole process in the state called the Community Compact. And so one of the, one of the areas that, that we're looking at here is up, um, about all of our, um, our I T. And so, um, that is, um, and I'll get you more details on that, but I believe that we used the, some of the district money to help us, um, put that together.
Oh, great. Um, okay, then just quickly, we have, um, I'm gonna skip all of this unless you have anything specific about A and Rs, lot releases, bonds.
I do have A and Rs that actually, when I looked over here, they didn't make it up here, but if someone can come down and sign, um, on your way out. Um, we have two A and Rs. One is, um, creating the second lot on West Street. You did the common driveway at your last meeting. So the A and R is for that, and then there's another A and R that is just, um, kind of realigning a, a lot line between two neighbors, um, on increased Ward Drive. So I have those, um, both downstairs. Um, you know, if one of you or all of you wanna sign it, does, whatever.
Okay, um. So, no subcommittee, any subcommittee updates?
Just from CPC that we didn't do last time, that basically they approved all of their, uh, um, applications except for ones that were withdrawn. So White Cliffs, Affordable Housing Administration Fund, passive park, Bartlet Pond, Library, Discol, and Sec, Cemetery, all got it.
So nothing for open space?
We have no money.
Nothing for open space, though?
Yeah, no, there was, open space.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear it.
Thirty-four.
Oh, all right, this is the basic.
For the open space committee itself to go into the conservation fund, they withdrew their application.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
There are three projects for open space.
And for our next board meetings, you mentioned we have four hundred Cedar Hill and two twenty-two West Main coming up?
That's in March. That's at your March third meeting. And so everyone, um, and Carrie, you, if, if it's not in front of you, it's on the cart. Um, um, I have those applications for you tonight. But, um, but between yesterday and Friday, other people picked up theirs.
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then for Zero Bartlett, that's for your next meeting on the eighteenth. Um, I'm anticipating revised plans, but, you know, you'll, you'll get those, I mean, but when they come in, we'll, we'll, we'll distribute those.
Okay, and, sorry, so I didn't actually, I just got through it now.
So is it a big revision? Like, should we not look at the plans we have?
The, um, I.
Yeah.
Wait, what's a, what's a revision?
Fred's been talking to the.
Zero Bartlett.
Zero Bartlett, okay.
So wait for those revised plans? Okay, that's a big package.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have them yet, but, um, Carrie, I just wanna make sure.
And we have that for groundwater next week? Maybe?
So far. Still finalizing the agenda.
Okay.
Oh, it's, okay. Carrie, I'm hoping, is that my pinky?
Yes, is this you?
Okay, yeah. For the March third.
Okay, so, um. All right, so two twenty-two is just for a common driveway. All right, so two twenty-two ju- is just for a common driveway?
Yeah, two twenty-two is a common driveway, two twenty-two West Main Street is a common driveway. And then, um, four hundred Cedar Hill, um, that, um, that is a site plan, but it's, um, your first, what's called a Dover Amendment application, um, where in this particular case, the use is not allowed. And, and as the applicant chose to file, what's called under the Dover Amendment, um, which is also in Mass General Law, section three, is exempt uses. And, um, so this particular one at four hundred Cedar Hill is an indoor soccer, training soccer facility. So it's not, um, after April, it'll probably be allowed, um, in the industrial district, but right now it's not. Um, so they're filing it as a, um, that it's an educational use, and therefore it can be located anywhere. And, um, so they're going through the site plan review process with you, um, we're setting up designer review right now for them.
We've got a quick question about that, and it's more financial. If it's a nonprofit using the Dover Amendment, do they still pay taxes? I just remember with the solar bylaw, there was a workaround for not paying taxes because it was nonprofit.
Nonprofit, um, which, which I, you know, took me years, but I mean, I, but nonprofit doesn't mean that you don't make a profit.
Yep, yep, so they still have to pay taxes?
Yes.
This, okay.
Yeah, they have to prove, it's basically to you, right? They have to prove to Bob that they are nonprofit, uh, cause there's one that's gonna be coming before the Z B A also. Um, but, you know, they have to provide all the, all of their, you know, registration that they have with the state and their letters of incorporation and.
Are they doing a sixty-one B? Cause they're soccer fields, or no?
No, the, no, the property's not under sixty-one B.
Isn't it indoor? Isn't it just indoor soccer?
Well, there's one outdoor.
Yeah, I don't, um, I, I actually don't know if, um, that's like, that's March, I haven't even looked at it yet.
I looked at it, it was one indoor.
I don't know if they've been an outdoor field or not, but, um, it's, uh, the way it's been pitched to us is it's an indoor facility.
With, I don't know what I can ask about it, like, with two-two-two, is there, so there's pending things going on, is there anything that?
Pen- pending litigation does not stop.
I can't understand where his driveway is.
Other, you know.
So it's ongoing?
Yeah, yeah, doesn't stop other applications from being filed.
Okay.
So if we wanted an update on the whole, what's going on, we would have to have an executive session to get an update?
And there will, and there, and there is no, nothing's happening at, right now.
I, I'm a little confused about this application. I couldn't figure out where they're putting the common driveway. Is it that just gonna go between one eight?
Like I said, I literally have not, they are sitting.
Oh, yeah, like I picked it, I was like, where's the common driveway, cause usually you get.
So I'll have cracked those open, um, for your next meeting, even though.
I mean, I was looking at my third.
You know, we really can't be talking about it.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, not because of the litigation, just because it's a application before you.
Okay.
And you, and you should be in the public hearing.
Well, maybe they should bring a drawing that we can see the common driveway, cause I can't figure it out.
I have a really good drawing.
Yeah.
The one, well, not with me, but the one I got, it was really good.
Okay, okay, so Anthony, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great, um, and anything, and Z B A, just anything exciting coming on the twenty-fifth for them?
Um, there, um, there's, um, well, you know, the, the person who wants his pool may be, oh, that's quite exciting to them. But there's four applications, but the one that is, um, may be of most interest to you is another, what's called Dover Amendment's application. And it's an appeal of, um, uh, um, a zoning interpretation. They, they believe that because they are an exempt use, that they don't need to follow high-dimensional regulations. And so, um, a- a staff reviewed it, and, and Bob, um, Bob writes the letters, and, you know, the determination was made that, well, you have to follow those regulations. So they're appealing that to the zoning board.
Who's that, who's that applicant?
The applicant is, um, Scott Goddard is his name, and he's got an LLC. I mean, I don't know what the LLC is, but.
Yeah.
Um, he's proposing, uh, a daycare. There is no particular daycare that we know of, you know, as far as like a, a particular company, but he's proposing to build a, a daycare.
Okay, is there a motion?
Any of the applications, oh, sorry, do any of them have site plan? Cause usually we look at them if, if they have a site plan, and we give input.
The, um, the, the pool variance, you don't, the accessory dwelling, you don't, the appeal, you don't. Um, and the other one is, um, a D P W project, and I'll have to look at that application.
Because.
To see whether or not that's, um.
Maybe if it has site plan approval, you could let us know, we could come, pick it up in case we have any input on the eighteen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any applications downstairs, so I'm wondering if they even filed, but I'll, I'll check on that.
So can you submit?
They, they still need to go, it's not, it's not gonna, they, that application, um, for the D P W still needs to go to designer review, so it's, um, it's, it's not a done deal.
What are they thinking about doing?
At this point, they're, um, they're building a new building, um, on School Street. Where the, where the existing facility is.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Um, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.